Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and young ladies and young gentlemen. I would like to welcome you all to the Thursday, December 14th, meeting of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District. If you wouldn't mind joining me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Flag's right over here. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That was the coolest thing I've ever heard. Well, hopefully in a minute, we'll meet you, but in the meantime, I'd like you to meet us. So we'll do an introduction of members, and we'll start with Karen.
Karen Vernon, Millville.
Jack Keefe, Blackstone.
Gwen Cox, School President.
Ellen Himmelberger, Superintendent.
Jane Reggio, Millville.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Tammy Lemieux, Blackstone.
Sarah Williams, Blackstone.
Okay, welcome. And I understand that we have some special guests with us here this evening, and we would like to invite them to come and tell us why they're here. Hello, Mr. Tringali. Welcome.
I know some of you people.
Yeah, I think so.
Anyway, but I'm Steve Tringali, Principal of JFK Elementary, and we have -- very proud to bring two members of our second grade team, and we have some very excited second graders, Mrs. Groupie and Ms. Scoville's class. We have five from each, and they're here to present their work to you.
That's wonderful.
So I want to get them up here and get me away.
Okay, thank you. And I knew nothing about this.
Yes, big surprise. Well, thank you for having us.
Thank you.
So first, we just want to say thank you so much for having us. We're really excited to be here tonight at JFK. All of the classrooms are working, and they're doing incredible work, and so we're excited to just kind of share some of the things that second grade is working on. And what we're presenting has to do with our Reader's Workshop curriculum that we have participated in. We started with, as you know, the Teachers for Teachers training, and we've completed that, and then we used that training to start curriculum mapping. And as a result of that curriculum mapping, we created, in second grade, an author study of Mark Brown, who was the author of the Arthur series. And we use the Arthur series to help us study our reading standards in second grade, which we expect students to learn how characters develop based off of their traits, what they say, what they do, what they think, and really dive deep into that understanding of characters and how they can change throughout stories. And they also learn how the overall stories are structured, how they start, the beginning, the middle, the end, and how characters respond to those events, those problems. And we chose Mark Brown as an author of the Arthur books because he is really engaging. He created characters that are really exciting for the kids to learn about. They're always excited when we say it's Reader's Workshop time. We have a new story to read today because they learn to love those characters, and they can really relate to their stories that we share with them.
So Arthur was a very exciting time every time we did it in Reader's Workshop. We actually read the books in order. So we started with the very first book, Arthur's Nose, and then we learned about Arthur, and then we moved into Arthur's Eyes, and then Arthur's Valentine. So we read the books in order that Mark Brown wrote them. And what we did was we tracked them in class on a chart. So we figured out exactly what he was thinking, what he was saying, what he was doing, and what lessons were learned. And we tracked the different characters in the books. We really understood the characters at a deeper level. So once we understood the characters at a deeper level by, you know, paying attention to their dialogue and understanding what traits they had, we knew that we were able to then kind of assume some things about what might happen and make some good predictions about what might happen in the books. And so it was really fun when we turned the pages, and the kids would be like, "Oh, DW is gonna," you know, or "We know that Francine's gonna be, you know, doing something rude." So it was really cute to see them being able to really understand exactly how Mark Brown worked his craft in these Arthur books. So then, we let them create their own Arthur books. So we brainstormed a group of problems Arthur might encounter during the school day or during, you know, his day in his life, and what problems he might have. And then we went through the whole writing process. We crafted stories. We revised them. We edited them. And tonight, we're publishing them. We shared in class, and then tonight, we get to publish them with you. So we brought some friends that are very eager to share some of their stories with you.
Great. Awesome. Jane.
So my kids are going to come up one at a time.
Okay.
So the first.
And when the students come up, if the parents want to come here so you can watch them, you're more than welcome to, or take pictures, you know, that kind of stuff. So you're not taking picture of their back. You're more than welcome. I don't know who's coming first, but whoever that parent is, you're welcome to come. There's extra chairs over here.
Absolutely.
Over here, right here.
They're not going to read their whole story today.
Okay.
They're just going to talk about what they had written, and then we're going to pass around the books so you can look at them. This is Shiana. Do you want to read?
Yes.
The kids were running in the house, threw a ball, and broke a lamp.
Could you turn the mic for her?
Yeah.
It won't do it in a minute.
The kids were running. The kids were running in the house, threw a ball, and broke a lamp. Arthur and DW were playing before school. They were throwing a ball. They ran, and a lamp fell over. DW tried to blame it all on Arthur, but Mom had seen what happened. DW got in trouble for lying.
Ah. I thought for sure Francine was going to steal the ball. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Alexis.
Hi, Alexis.
Arthur and his family goes on vacation and forgets an important thing. Arthur and his family have to go on vacation. They were late for the plane and forgot to pack a nightlight. They got to the hotel, and the kids were scared to go to sleep. Mom called the lobby, and they brought a nightlight. Finally, the kids went to sleep. Mom said she won't forget the nightlight again.
This is Aubrey.
Arthur's cousin come and break a craft he was making. Arthur and DW were making a craft. His cousins come over, who always caused trouble. The cousins broke Arthur's craft. Arthur tried to tell his mom, but she was busy. He decided to tell his aunt, who listened. Arthur hopes he doesn't see them again.
Wow.
DW broke the TV but blamed Arthur. Arthur left the room to help Mom wash dishes. DW broke the TV by tripping on a wire. DW blamed Arthur, too, gets him in trouble, but it didn't work. But DW feels bad, so she called the brain to come fix it. The brain tried, but can't help. But DW realized she can just plug the TV back in.
So that was it? It was not the remote? It was the TV was unplugged?
Yep, just unplugged.
Who knew? Thank you, Sebastian.
This is Sarah.
Hi, Sarah.
Arthur gets lost at the movies. Arthur and his family were waiting to go into the movies. Arthur leaves to use the bathroom and doesn't hear Mom say the line was moving. He came out to find his family. He accidentally went into the wrong movie. He came out to try and find a worker for help. Arthur bumped into his mom, who was looking too.
Thank you very much. All of that story is, don't go to that. Ever.
DW breaks the TV and lamp, but blames the other kids. Arthur and his friends were watching TV. They leave to get a snack, and DW accidentally breaks the lamp and TV. DW blames the kids, and they get sent to Arthur's room. Mom goes and talks to them, and they explain what happened. DW gets in trouble instead.
This DW is a troublemaker, isn't she?
She's a pecky little sister.
She is, yeah. Good job. Thank you, Julia.
Anna, this is my last ride, but I owe you.
Okay.
I got it. Nope, don't worry about it. I got it.
Welcome, Anna.
The kids are at the park playing, and Pal gets scared and runs away. Arthur is showing his friends the tricks Pal can do. DW comes up to the group and tries to scare them by yelling "Boo." Pal gets scared instead and runs away. The kids look and look, but can't find him. Finally, they hear Pal bark, barking. Pal runs out to them just in time before Mom comes.
Thank you.
The problem of the story is DW and Arthur are fighting over which room they get in their new house. First, Arthur tells his mom, but that does not work. Next, their dad says DW comes sit on the couch, but they keep fighting. Then they fight in the car and get grounded. The next morning, the moving truck came. DW looked at the red room. Then she said she does not want it after all. DW says, "Enjoy being grounded in your new room."
Thank you, Hannah. Do you have your sheet? Bring your sheet. Hello, Brendan.
Arthur gets invited to a pool party at Francine's house. Arthur gets nervous because he doesn't know how to swim. He tries to get friends to play hide-and-seek, but no one wanted to play hide-and-seek. Francine convinced Arthur to get in the pool, so he did. He goes in the pool, and he can stand up. The water isn't over his head, so he doesn't have to swim. DW is hiding in the pool.
Does she scare him? Ah, of course she does. Thank you very much.
You have it.
Arthur gets called into a...
This is my friend Jake.
Hi, Jake.
Arthur gets called into a basketball game, but he does not know how to play. He misses some plays. He misses a pass. He forgets who he is. Then he fouls someone out. They make a shot. Then they are dribbling down the court. The score is counting down, five, four, three, two. Then they pass the ball to Arthur. He shoots. He scores. Arthur is able to win the game for his team.
Oh, yay, Arthur. Jake, do you play basketball? You'll never know.
Yes, you do.
He does.
And this is my friend Riley.
Hi, Riley.
The problem of my story is Arthur does not know where his new classroom is. First, he walked into the library. There was a class in there. He felt embarrassed. Next, Arthur asked Muffy if she had Mr. Rappburn. No. Then, pretty please? No. Pretty, I mean, please, Muffy? No. Pretty please? After that, Francine comes around the corner. Finally, I had all of that solution. Francine takes Arthur to his new classroom. Now, he has to sit next to her all year.
Thank you. Very good. I like the pretty please. Pretty please. Very cool pool. I'm going swimming.
And this is my friend Charlotte.
Hi, Charlotte.
The problem is, in my story, is Arthur didn't bring anything into school for show and tell. Arthur asked Muffy for something, but she didn't have anything. Next, Arthur asked Buster, but he had nothing, too. Then Arthur asked Winky, but he traced Arthur around the whole school. After that, Arthur had to go back to the classroom, but he wanted to hide. The solution was math. Mr. Rappburn, his teacher, gave him a toy.
Aww.
So, and we were lucky enough to have Mr. Mott here. She's a BMR sophomore, and she comes to my room twice a week to do buddy reading. So she helps hear some of the stories, understand some of the stories, and help with some of the creations of the books. So we're very grateful to Mr. Mott.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Do you all want to come? And we'll take a big picture of everybody who came. Can you all come up to the front?
Yes.
And you want to hold your books?
No.
You can see Jake's.
What?
Jake's in the locker.
Where are you going? Get your books.
Here's Jake's. Quick, basketball game. You guys were awesome. Did you like it, Julia? Did you like coming? Jake, do you play basketball? Yeah, bet you do. A ton of different sports. What else?
Awesome. This is court.
He does all sports? All right, you guys, let's all come right here and look at your parents.
Brendan. Brendan's in the flag.
Brendan. And I love that pool. That pool is really cool.
Good.
I'm going swimming in your pool.
Leah, no. You get in, but we'll get out. All I see is little heads, but no people. Charlie. Leah, hold up your books. I can see your book.
Hold your paper behind you.
Turn it around.
Hold your book up. How cute. All right, we're good? Oh, my God.
Thank you.
Oh, my God, I want to eat them.
I don't know that I could ever teach at elementary. They're adorable when you're around them.
Yeah, right. Oh, yeah. Are you done warrants and everything yet?
Um, yes, I just signed those, and...
Did you take your reading?
Yes. Um, just doing Girl Scouts and stuff, I learned I can't tolerate, handle seven or eight of them. Never mind. I was just saying Cassie was in my Girl Scouts group.
Right?
And she's like Alexis' best friend now, but...
Yeah.
I can take up as much space as I want on the signature line, because it's underneath me. I'm in your seat. I'm in your seat. You got some messages? Tear, tear. You're heading home to finish watching this? She left us, Jake. She left us. She ditched us. She wanted to be home with you guys instead.
Bye.
Bye. See you. Nice to see you. And this is my phone on camera. I mean, it's, they picked up on the voice.
I hope Jesse paused it for...
You know, I don't think I could. I remember in third grade, I could probably do that. Second grade?
I have a 13-year-old. I don't think she could do it.
She's so cute.
All I was good for in third grade was Mrs. McGill's multiplication tables.
What? I know. And it'd be a little puddle. All right, we are going to move forward with our meeting and move in our agenda a little bit, because we have other guests here tonight. So we are not going to make them stay and listen to Beltice. No. So as everybody knows, we have started our budget process and planning and discussions. At our last meeting, or the meeting before, Mr. Himmelberger presented his three-year budget projection plan, and then we, as a school committee, had a budget workshop and looked at other items that were in the text of that, and went over a document that I shared with folks about how do we fit in things like continuing the Chromebook initiative, or the Voice Over Internet Protocol, or the reading specialists, or...
Science curriculum.
School counselors in the high school. And so we asked the leadership team, the principals of the different, each school, to come and speak to us tonight about their kind of hot-button issues that they feel really need to either be brought back into our budget process or added to our budget process because they are true needs within their schools. And again, this is the preliminary start, and so we'll ask you when you share with us your needs and however you're going to do it. What we're looking at still is that three years. So is this something you need immediately, FY19? Can it wait till '20? Can it wait till '21? And if it's all for right now, it's all for right now. So, move forward.
Do you want everybody forward?
Ah, sure. What the hell? Or what do you want to do? You want to do one at a time?
We were going to have Mrs. Braverman lead off.
Okay.
And then we were going to go to Mr. Bozan.
Okay.
And then we were going to go to the elementary and then the high school.
We always do those poor middle and high school people last, but okay, that's okay with me.
Or we could take them next.
No, no, it's good. Loretta's here. She's ready. Welcome, Mrs. Braverman.
Good evening. She was perfect. She was the cutest little thing, just a little doll. Gorgeous, tiny. She was a great baby. We didn't know any better. So, of course, as a first-time mom, I'm thinking, this is completely normal, these drop-down fits on the ground.
Yelling, screaming.
Yelled at teachers.
Or her hitting us. Wiping things off the table.
He would try to get out of the room.
It's more than a tantrum.
He has challenges communicating how he's thinking and feeling without getting angry and sometimes aggressive.
You have to imagine a bell going off in your head all the time. Constantly goes off in his head.
Like a fire alarm.
That he can't shut off.
Imagine never being able to shut that off.
Something just starts boiling inside of me, like a water just boiling, and it just makes me feel hot-headed.
The scariest moments are when you do not feel like you can keep the other kids in the classroom safe.
Yeah.
I don't hate teachers enough to enter the third world of a classroom. I don't.
When children are throwing chairs across the room. We've had to evacuate our classroom before.
Mainstream teachers just need to be equipped with tools on what to do with these kids who get stuck so easily and who are not flexible, because kids want to do their best.
What's hard is the amount of support and training that teachers need to be able to keep their heads above water, given that oftentimes their classrooms are stacked against them.
I have hope. I think there's someone out there who can do something for a child like this. There has to be.
Some people say that I'm weird in my school, and I say, I don't care. I'm trying my best for who I am.
Braverman. Good evening. Good evening. It's nice to be here. So tonight, I just want to talk a little bit about some reflection. When you think about the way the school day was originally designed, it was really designed around to meet the needs of academics. But it really is not designed for what is now walking through our front doors. The issues, the challenges, the behaviors, the differentiated learning that is required now of our students is quite different than it had been many years ago. We need to do a better job at looking at how to solve problems, because when we solve problems, we can distinguish and stop behaviors. And so tonight, I'm here to talk to you about the real need, about the rise in behaviors that are very concerning, that are not just at one level, but throughout the district. Point one percent of our time as educators should be spent on crisis management. Should be or is spent? Should be. Point one percent is what research says a school district should be focusing on for crisis management. In the four months that we have been open for business, we are already at 1.728%. Define for me a crisis. A crisis is any time a child's safety is at risk, or a teacher's safety is at risk, or peers' safety are at risk. If we had the capability tonight, I was going to show you a quick three-minute video, but Jesse has agreed that he will embed it into tonight's segment, and I can also email you the segment as well. The concern that I'm raising tonight is not, of course, unique to Blackstone Millville. There is a national upswing on student behaviors that are alarming and concerning that rise to a crisis definition. We're not alone. But it is something that, as the Director of Special Education, the Director of Student Services, I do need to bring to your attention, that we would be remiss if we were moving forward with a budget that did not recognize the fact that we need to do more with social emotional learning. We need to do more with our BCBA's. We need to do more with our BCBA's, which are our Board Certified Behavior Analyst. Because when we have the expertise of highly qualified experts in that field, what we know is when we begin to help students solve problems, that we can stop behaviors. The name of the video that you'll be seeing embedded in this program is called "The Kids We Lose."
It's called what?
"The Kids We Lose."
So, when you say we need to do more, we are develop- this is our, this is the spread- this is a spreadsheet for us. This is, so townspeople, community members, everybody can understand the financial needs that we have, the, the bottom line. So, when we need to do more with BCBA's, do we need to have more of them?
Yes, I recommend adding one full-time position.
And immediately?
Immediately. The behaviors that we're seeing today, the crises that we are seeing?
Time out.
Okay.
That's the, like, typical salary person, or is that somebody who's so specialized they're up there?
They would be in Unit A on the steps.
Okay.
Based on their experience.
Okay.
So, the teachers, the teacher's scale.
Why are we discussing next year's budget?
Whether it's this whole thing, the whole, whether it's next year or the year after. Their needs, we're discussing their needs.
The reason that I'm recommending a BCBA is because the behaviors that we are seeing do require that type of expertise. These are not the types of behaviors that a sticker is going to solve, or a sticker sheet. These are not the types of problems that add another para are going to solve, or a one-to-one for a student are going to solve, or add an ABH tech are going to solve. These are significant behaviors that are happening. And I cannot say that it's just at one level in one building, it's across the district. Behavior is a signal. It's the fever. When you take a child's temperature, and you see your child has a high temperature, a high fever, you know something's wrong. And when you see the behaviors that we are seeing, we know there's something wrong. And so, working harder to get these behaviors under control, so we can address them and have them in a right frame of mind, so we can begin to figure out what the root cause is going on with some of our students in crisis.
And when you talked about addressing social-emotional, the BCBA does that, or do we need more social-emotional room program?
We really need more, what we really, I would like to see developed is a social-emotional learning curriculum. Now, social-emotional learning really is Tier One and Tier Two, which is general education. Of course, I'm Tier Three, special education. And special education is not proactive, special education is reactive. We come in when all else fares. We're reacting to students not making effective progress due to academics or behavior. So, we're reactive. So, social-emotional learning is really general education. But it's part of that pre-referral process that can put stopgaps in place, so that way we don't end up with students on IEPs for social-emotional disturbances that rise to the level of needing an IEP. I think the social-emotional learning component is something that we would look at as far as professional development, and how we would invest those dollars into really gearing up our teachers. We have teachers who are using every tool they have in their toolbox, every website that we have provided for them, every website that they have found on their own. But I do feel as though there is a level of real skilled professional development that needs to come in and work with our teachers. So, that way, we don't have the kids that we are losing. And when I say losing, I don't mean jumping into odda district placements, I mean losing as far as a readiness for learning. When kids are that emotionally dysregulated, they're not accessing the curriculum. They don't have a readiness for learning. And that will affect our standardized test scores. And that does affect the culture of our district. There are students who have had to go home and say that their classroom has had to be evacuated because of a child being so dysregulated. That's alarming. And again, it's not just unique to Blackstone Millville. These are classrooms across the country. You, you, you see this on the news, you know this. But we really would be amiss if we didn't plan for this in our budget. I hope that we are all working really hard to raise compassionate students, and that students understand there are times when a classroom has to be evacuated, but I also know as a parent, it's quite concerning. So, again, behavior is the fever. And the temperatures are high out there right now in some of these classrooms. The second thing that I would like to talk about this evening is our cohort of students who have intellectual disabilities. We have a small cohort who IQs could be anywhere from 79 and below. And because we had budget cuts last year, we had to eliminate the, the teacher classroom that served those students at the middle school.
So what?
And so, what had happened was those students, we have a small pocket of students who were embedded into small group instruction at the middle school. And we're working really hard to make sure that those kids are supported correctly, and that they are able to access curriculum. But it's a very small number of students right now. Next year, we have a group of fifth graders who will be sixth graders. And we will need to restore that classroom.
So, we, we need a classroom or a teacher?
A teacher, a teacher for that classroom. It's the essentials learning.
And for next year?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Does that, so one special educator will fit that need, are there any paraprofessionals that will be needed to support that group? And how, what number are we looking at approximately? And I know it's always a moving target.
Sure. We currently have a paraprofessional working with those students now, along with the special education teacher in the small group setting. And then for opportunities in inclusion. But we really, they, they really require a sub-separate program.
But that para is at the fifth grade?
That para can, it can be moved around. She, no, she's not at the fifth grade, she's in the middle school now, working with the small group that has been embedded.
That's here now.
So, we would continue to use that para. Except now, we would give her a home base, we would give her a classroom, a program with the new full-time teacher.
Gotcha.
And that's for next year. Two years from now, I'll be in front of you, and I will be bringing to your attention the cohort of students that we have in our elementary PLC, which is our pragmatic learning center. In many ways, these are our students who are non-verbal, they use iPads and communication devices. That group will be middle school level. So, I'm putting that on the horizon, not as an immediate need, but something that you need to know is coming.
Well, we're, and we're trying to do that. We are trying to give our, our communities, you know, three-year projection, this is coming down the road.
Right.
So, in FY20, we'll have pragmatic learning students who are moving from the elementary level to middle.
Yes.
And so, they will require another classroom here that doesn't exist already?
Correct.
And just to clarify, the pragmatic learning is often associated with a diagnosis of autism spectrum disorder. So, that particular diagnosis often has, although it is a spectrum, often has a specific set of goals and needs within the school day to help them access curriculum. And they often are not tolerant to many other different things going on around them, which is, tends to make that group requirement of a small, smaller number with less bigger behavior issues outside of that range, but...
And when you have an opportunity to view the three-minute video that I was hoping to show tonight, in each instance in that video, those are the full-time additions that I'm asking for to meet the needs of the students that you will see in the video, because those are our students.
Does the social-emotional learning, in your view, come as just a curriculum, or does it come with a person who's teaching the curriculum if, if it's here? In your view, because it is a regular ed initiative.
It is a regular ed initiative, but social-emotional learning should be happening everywhere, in every classroom, at any opportunity that someone intercepts with a student. So, social-emotional learning can be happening with the nurse, it can be happening in the cafeteria, it can be happening...
But is there, if it's general, is there a written, is there a curriculum you purchase? You purchase?
You can, you can purchase a canned curriculum.
And professional development that would go with that?
Exactly.
Do you have any idea what that costs?
I would say with professional development and curriculum, we would probably be talking about at least $25,000.
And that is an immediate need?
It is an immediate need. And you will see that there are some recommendations coming down from Jesse, the Department of Education, where an educator's ability to facilitate the emotional, the social-emotional learning will be a component of the teacher's evaluation, that's being discussed right now. So, we need to gear up now, because that's coming. You know, today, today is the 50th anniversary, anniversary of Sandy Hook Elementary School. There is a reason why Massachusetts leads in the country, in many of the initiatives that we do, and the social-emotional learning, and the drive and the attention that that's getting at the state level now, has risen out of the unfortunate circumstances such as Sandy Hook. That we are raising human beings, we are raising children to know how to solve problems and communicate their problems and feelings effectively. And that's really important today.
Any other questions for Loretta? It's Braverman, okay. Alright.
Okay. As usual, it's very nice to see everyone. If anyone has any additional questions or concerns, you can shoot me an email, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sean?
Good evening. Bless you.
Do you want to do it now? Hold on, pause, pause Sean. We're gonna, we're gonna jump out of order again. So, we're gonna bring somebody else up, if that's okay. We have a, a parent who is here who wants to speak with us. And so, we're going to move out of order of our agenda, if that's okay with everyone, and have a, a public forum.
So, we're skipping the review of the current policy?
This is a different topic.
Oh, oh, okay.
Okay.
Well, thank you all for having me and giving me this opportunity. My name is Melissa Novicki, I'm the parent of Alexis Novicki, who attends your JFK with Mrs. Scoville.
Hello.
I don't want to beat a dead horse. You would just heard wind of why I was coming for that social-emotional learning training to go on. Your school is struggling, I volunteer in the classroom, I see what the teachers are going through. You know, you have children that have non-behavioral issues, you have children with behavioral issues, you have children that have emotional issues, you have children with learning disabilities. And I don't think any child should be left behind, but your teachers are struggling, your staff is struggling. Behavioral children take up a lot of the time, and they're still good children. I'm not here to, you know, have any parent feel that I'm speaking out of turn, I mean, I have my own. But your staff needs more training, that you need more help in the classrooms, whether it's additional aides in the classroom, maybe you can work out some type of co-op program through BVT or BMR, and have that be a co-op program for them. I'm not sure, you know, what you can do for funding for it, but I would encourage that. I would encourage surveys to go home to the parents, surveys to go to your line staff, so they can complete the surveys, along with the parents to complete surveys, and kind of, you know, flow through the surveys and see what areas need to be fixed. I'm trying to think what else, because I don't want to keep you, keep you here too long. But it would be a win-win situation for all involved, the students, as well as your staff. Excuse me. So, I don't know. That's really, I just, I just want someone to say something, because, I mean, parents are struggling, the teachers are struggling. Alexis is in Mrs. Scoville's class, she does wonderful. I'm sure that she's not the only second-grade classroom that's struggling. I don't have the opportunity to view anybody, anybody else's classroom, but I see what Mrs. Scoville goes through, and she does wonderful. All the kids' needs are met, but it's, it's hard, she's only one person, and she's just spread way too thin, and I'm sure it's with that across the, the board, whether it's at the high school, the middle school, or the elementary school. But your staff needs help. Excuse me for a minute, baby. Your staff needs help, and I'm here to advocate for them. I mean, I would encourage all of you, if possible, to volunteer in the classroom, don't just take a tour, spend a couple hours and see what the teachers are dealing with, with the children. Because I don't want to isolate children, I think what they're doing is great by integrating the classrooms, I think that's phenomenal. And I think that's what every child needs, I just think they need a bigger support system to keep that classroom moving. That's really, that's it. There's nobody to blame, there's, you know, it's just, they need help.
All right. Well, thank you so much for, for sharing your thoughts. It is important for us to hear that, so we thank you for, for coming, and certainly we'll keep that on our agenda as we have these discussions, because I think you're right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We need to talk to the kids that be mean to people.
Okay. I, I hope that we are all learning how to do that, because I think the most important thing is we have to be kind to each other, don't you think?
Some people aren't to me.
Some people aren't. You know what? Well, maybe, maybe we can teach them, because that's what we're here. So, we can learn together, because that's what we have to be. We have to be nice, we have to be kind. And we have to be brave, and you are very brave to come here and talk to us today. So, thank you so much. It's hard to do.
We can, we can go now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Novicki.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, thank you for allowing us to move our agenda.
Sean, take two.
Sean, take two. Or three, or four, or five. Sean, just turn the mic. And you're already on my list anyways. Update me.
All of you heard me speak, we gave you a, I gave you a technology kind of State of the Union about a month and a half ago. Now, we're starting budget, it's gonna, I told you you're gonna start hearing things about staffing, so I'm gonna go just straight into it.
Okay.
And go line item, line item, that you're going to be seeing in detail. I hate to use the word initiative. I hate to use the word initiative, but if we're a G-suite district, which is what we are-
Yep.
And we're doing one-to-one, and we're thinking 21st century district, which is what these kids need and our staff need, the resources to do, you're gonna see line items that support that. So, I heard you say earlier, what are immediate needs? I can't find, if you were to scale these from one to four, anything but a one on these, if that's truly our mission.
First year, go for it. Okay.
So, item number one is 32 Chromebooks in a cart. All of these are leases. The 32 Chromebooks are going to MES. There'll be 64 Chromebooks, three-year lease going to AFM, and 64 Chromebooks going to JFK. All three-year leases, as well as our one-to-one initiative. Our original initiative for the district was to do, it was two grades, excuse me, we were gonna do the whole high school, as I understand it, before I came here, and we ended up, we were gonna do grade levels and work our way down. The high school is finished.
Right.
The middle school, we're going right six through eight.
Six to eight, okay.
And the reason why we're asking six through eight, there's a variety of reasons, some of which I just spoke about. We are a G-suite district, and we're teaching 21st century skills to our students. Another big reason is MCAS 2.0. We have, I don't know how else to sugarcoat this, so I'm not gonna do it, some extremely old equipment. You're gonna hear me ask for 143 monitors here in this building for labs that-
Hundred, how many?
Hundred and forty-three.
Forty-three monitors.
And that is, those monitors were purchased when this building was made, so I think we've got our dollars out of those. So, the, just to reiterate, the middle school, we're gonna go six, we're, we're looking to go six through eight for Chromebooks-
Six eight.
-which is 476 Chromebooks. The total for the three elementaries would be 176 Chromebooks.
Okay.
All of these are a three-year lease. Our engineering program, or STEM program that Mr. Pilling runs, we need 21, 24 PCs in there that can run the software to run that program. He is using a program right now that's approximately six years old to do some programming. I'm not saying we need state-of-the-art, but we do need the hardware to run that program.
So, so, even though we're, we're one-to-one, we still need PCs, we still need monitors, we still need the other pieces.
That's an interesting question. Yes, we do.
Okay.
We're transitioning to Chromebooks, even with the staff. But you can't, it takes time, where you've got, there are, there are G-suite programs that are specific to certain items. When you talk about the CAD program, there are programming, programs out there that do it, but not what's being used out in the real world like SolidWorks or AutoCAD as of yet. So, you really can't pull the labs instantly overnight.
Okay.
You have to leave those options. And in this building, we need those labs just to do MCAS 2.0 and have the availability.
Okay.
But we're gonna wean those away.
Gotcha.
So, we're not gonna buy a 21-inch monitor, we're gonna buy a $60 or $70 monitor that gets them by.
Sean, may I ask, what, what happens to the seniors who have Chromebooks now? We bought those. Where, where are they going in this scheme of things?
The seniors actually are leased. It's, it's juniors and sophomores that were purchased.
Okay.
But that's a good question. So, what happens to the seniors? Those get circled back around?
To the freshmen?
To the freshmen. Good question. Always worried about enrollment, so if, you know, if it goes up, do we have enough? What I factor is, and it's been great for breakage and forgetting it and forgetting to charge it, is I factor approximately 8% above the enrollment that we do at the time, because enrollment may change, and I'm hoping it changes next year.
Mm-hmm.
But we're going, we're basing all of our leasing on current enrollment right now, and that can change.
And are your numbers that you're going to give to us in line with what you had presented us previous in the spring for?
They're gonna be subtly different-
Different.
-because of enrollment and because of, I've been working with four vendors to drive down the cost of the Chromebooks.
So, is it a different vendor? Or is, are we-
No, we're gonna, we're, if we were to make the decision right now, it would be HP. I will leave it. It's nice to keep the same model, for lack of a better term, you have one person you can talk to about the problem instead of three different vendors. So, but yeah, it would be HP at this point. So, the engineering program I mentioned, they need 24 PCs, four laptops. I got asked why they need four laptops. These children will be going to competitions with four teams. They need the software on there, so when one team's up there, the other team can do adjustments to their robot after they've committed for the second competition, so they can adjust. They need to adjust on the fly, and that's why we'll need the four laptops. There's a small line item in here. We're gonna be reallocating some, some computer tables for Mr. Pilling's room, and we're gonna need some brackets if we do get those devices to securely mount them. Probably one of the biggest projects outside of the one-to-one is our interactive projector replacement. District-wide, we have about 14 different models of projectors, and that's all they do is project. And we have approximately 22 smart boards, which are at a minimum of eight years old. That's the end of their life expectancy. Some are more than that here in the middle school. So, the interactive projector replacement program is gonna start at the middle, at the high school, because there we have right now nine different models. Buying an interactive projector and putting it in every room does a couple of things. It actually gives them a smart board and a projector all in one, without buying the board, at $4,500 per room. For $2,500 a room, give or take 100, because I'm still working with some of the vendors, we can save the district $1,500 every time we do a room. The problem with that is, is if we do one room or two room a year, we're now got 20 different models, because they're gonna change. That is also a lease. Right now, it's a four-year lease. I will give you the numbers. We can make a change. I'm working with when right now. That's a project that, it's not like the Chromebook where they're a disposable item. It's gonna last a while. So, but for right now, just to get a, a number, we went with four years.
Oh, no, I won't. I won't.
Any questions on that item?
No, I still have a whole nother list. You've got other things on your list, I'm assuming.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not done. I'm not done. I'm on a roll. Thank you.
Yeah, he's on a cart. We're carting him off any minute now.
Part of the, part of the interactive projectors are Chromecast. We have, this year, we, we bought three, and we're gonna put them in place to test, but the first one we're testing is going pretty well.
You mean like the things people have in their homes?
Chromecast. So, what that's gonna allow us to do is the kids at the high school who are a little further in the project, if we can get those projectors put in place, it allows the teacher to basically use a Chromebook or any device to connect to that Chromecast and show what they're doing wirelessly. It also, more importantly, allows the student to show their work and collaborate. You know, this is including the library, there'll be one there. So, if the kids want to do a breakout session, and they go down, one kid puts his Chromebook up and they start working away. But that'll be in all 38 of the high school rooms. That'll be the first part of the projector replacement. But I just mentioned the Chromebooks will be there, because there's a line item for that. The replacement monitors I mentioned, there's 143, that's here at the middle school. With buying those 143, I got asked, you know, can we move some here or there? The oldest monitors we have, believe it or not, are in this building. That will get us by, and we can do some triage as we move more towards using Chromebooks. Our head-end rooms, if you're familiar with a head-end room, it's where all the servers are.
Oh, okay. Now I am.
Okay. They are where the brains are in each building-
Okay.
-and they don't like heat, and there's a lot of money in there. We, I've got a line item here for JFK, the complex has one, luckily, it's all one room there, for a portable AC unit to be put in there. I've had two vendors come out, I have another one coming Monday. So, the complex, or JFK and AFM, the high school and MES, so the three buildings that really need AC units in there, there actually isn't anything. And the, the rule of thumb is for every year you run over 85 degrees in that room, you're taking a year away from the server.
Huh.
So, we're running on borrowed time with those. MES has an issue with their HVAC control system that happens to, needs to be upgraded, and I put it in my budget because it's actually a web server. Mr. Ha, he's aware of it, and he may mention it. Now, the two most important items here that we cannot live without.
Okay.
You can't put another Chromebook in place, another monitor, and expect response times to get better without-
People.
People, staffing. So, I am going to be asking for, to take the current help desk tech, who's doing an awesome job, I'm gonna, he's now a .6. I had mentioned he was a .5, my numbers were wrong the last time we talked. He's a .6 right now, we want to make him a .4, and then another 1.0 position. Now, just to give you an idea, if you go by the state, the state guidelines that I can send you the link to for staffing, they say every 400 devices, you need one help desk tech. Right now, without buying another Chromebook, we have 1,757 devices. What are those devices? It doesn't include servers, but it does include PCs, laptops, Chromebooks, and iPads.
Mm-hmm.
If we add the 600 and change, we're gonna be, well, based on those standards, we should have 4.3, 4.4 people. I agree and disagree in many areas on the 400. I honestly think that we could do 4, 450 with the proper staffing, or 500 even, if we press it.
So, if we add a, a .4 and add a one-
Yes.
-we have how many total?
In the technology department?
Yeah. We won't even still have 4.4, will we?
Well, there'll be four people at that point.
Oh, okay.
So, I mean, yes.
But we'll be 3.4. In terms of full-time bodies.
If you were to give me 1.4, 1.4 right now-
We give you 1.4, but take away .6.
There you go. Yes, you're correct.
Okay. All right. What do you have today?
We have 2.6.
Yeah, 2.6. So, they go to 3.4. So, you still don't even have enough people to do what you have, never mind what you're gonna add. If you're, if you're looking at those standards. Okay.
If you add the Chromebooks, just the Chromebooks, we need 6.02 people. And I'm not, it's not what we're asking for.
I get it.
Eventually, when the transition happens, when we're completely clouded and we're 80% or 60% G-suite devices, meaning one-to-one-
Right.
-we'll be fine with four.
No, it can't be it. What happened to our telephone?
Well, these are, these are up and above-
What you already gave us before.
-two items, and you guys already have the, the voice-over IP.
And the interactive-
I'm actually addressing that again and looking at leasing that.
And the interactive boards.
There's no need for the interactive boards at this point. If we, if we do the interactive projector-
Oh, then we don't need the board.
Then we don't need the board.
Okay.
It's 300 a piece.
I'm sorry?
Just 300 a piece, the, the regular whiteboard.
Oh, yeah. You're talking about the whiteboard, Jane?
No, I don't know. You, you told us- Replacement of interactive boards, so, but that, I think that's the-
Yeah, that, if it's interactive, but not the whiteboard, the whiteboard is a dry erase board.
Okay. Yep, all right.
So, what we have on this is what he's talking about, the interactive projectors.
Interactive projectors.
Is already, is what we have here.
That is, well, okay, so it's-
So, it's not boards, it's projectors.
Correct.
All right. Now, I didn't, you didn't save me $45,000. Just checking. Got some, but, okay.
Any questions?
Any questions? And, and the, so, doing this, if you had to again project then what you would need the following year, just kind of more Chromebooks.
Yes. We're gonna drill further down, grades three through five. I'll tell you who's been instrumental in this, is Monica Cardy. I wish we had three of her, but we can't slice her that thin, so.
But we could still look at the, the Voice Over Internet Protocol phone system over three years. Don't have to do it all in one year.
That number, I am working on right now with two other vendors to look at leasing that'll decrease that number.
Okay.
The numbers that you're gonna see on the Chromebook and the initiatives now-
Be less.
Are a lot less. We're not doing what we used to do, which is bite off 100,000 or 80,000 at a whack and then wait six years to replace them.
Okay.
The plan.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Sean?
Awesome.
Anybody got $10 million? Okay, just-
It's not that much.
But, we are gonna-
Can I add one more thing? The, the rule of thumb with budget-
Yeah.
-for technology-
Yeah.
Including professional development, should be 4% of the overall budget.
Oh, that's good to know, actually.
Four, 4.4.
Do you know what we are?
I don't right now.
And when, I'm not gonna ask you that, I'm asking Sean.
I don't know.
I don't either.
Not right now.
Yeah. Anybody? No? Good. Thank you.
No, thank you.
We are gonna go backwards, because we always make middle school and high school go last, so we're gonna let the high school go first. Yep. Hello, Mr. Dudek.
Happy holidays.
You as well.
So, my wife is expecting any minute, so my phone is on my, on the desk. If it goes off, Blackstone and Millville knows that I'm running to the hospital.
Congratulations. Good luck.
Hopefully, that doesn't ring.
Talk quick.
She's not hoping that. She's not in the hospital right now.
No, 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 but things are moving in a direction that we may have a baby tonight or tomorrow.
That's very exciting, very exciting.
So, yes, new father, so.
This is a first.
So, just looking at the budget at the high school, I, I do want to share that I think it's fair. I think that it's concise. I think that I've, I've asked for feedback from various members from the departments. I've talked to Sean. I've talked to Tanya, talked to Paul, I've talked to everyone to, to really incorporate this as a district's budget, but also looking at what we all need together. But most importantly, I think we're, we're looking at teaching and learning. How does that, that affect that? I don't think, again, I'm not giving you too much in terms of specifics tonight, but I, I feel that what I'm going to present to you is something that we need. There's no fluff. There's now, this is what we would want, just because it's there and it's the new product. I will share with Sean that the interactive projectors, I think, are, are really important. I think there, there's a smart decision that we can make, because right now, we do have a high school, along with the middle school and elsewhere, where we have smart boards that are eight, nine, 10, 12 years old. And in my six short years at the high school, we've had some that have failed, and we're looking for replacement parts. And replacement parts cost to for $600 replacing projectors. We're replacing the bulbs on the projectors. And when you look at replacing versus, or if you're looking at finding, repairing those products versus replacing with something that can do many different things, I think that's something that we definitely need to look at from a fiscal standpoint. No longer do we need smart boards. I, I don't feel that's something that we need to do and replace with a $4,500 piece of, of equipment that I think an interactive whiteboard can do, or an interactive projector can do. I really firmly believe in the Chromecast, especially with Chromebooks, because I've seen it in different districts where you have students that literally say, I'm on, I'm presenting, they get their Chromebook, they log in, however they do that, and they're right on the, the projector or the board, and they're going. We're not sending files or documents over to the teacher. Teacher needs to log in, and that takes five, 10 minutes for four or five presentations to go through. So, I think it's a nice succinct way of looking at that, and I, I'm glad that Sean was able to present that. Looking at some of the needs here at the high school, I will start off with a couple staff, staffing concerns. Last year, I needed to make a decision on what we were going to do in terms of cutting a staff member, and ultimately, without getting into too much, we cut a adjustment counselor. Currently, at the high school, we have a school psych- Currently, at the high school, we have a school psych, and we have two guidance counselors. So when we talk about MCAS administration, or to administer MCAS, Advanced Placement Monitor, Monitor, or Moderator, that has been put on other people in the district. So I am now, quote, the AP Coordinator at the high school. So I order, I fill out all the paperwork, I send out all letters to families, I go on the AP College Board and do everything that needs to be done that the adjustment counselor used to do at the high school. MCAS has really been taken over by Mr. Ducharme, with myself and guidance counselor helping. To me, I think college and career counseling is always something that we would love to be able to do more of, and that's been a common concern with many seniors, saying, look, I just wanna get to guidance so that I can go and talk about what college I wanna go to. We have all these kids that are dealing with other things that they wanted to. I'd love to be able to extend our internship program. It was great to see one of my sophomore interns here, down with, was it fourth grade today?
Second grade.
Second, I'm sorry, second grade. I'll figure that out.
Yeah.
At some point, how the ages go. But that is something that I think is really important for our students to be able to get something out of not just that four-wall classroom and really get out. But what I would love to be able to do, and several districts are doing it, is having a fourth quarter internship initiative or projects. I'd love to be able to pilot that this year, with me taking that on with 10 or so seniors and finding internship placements for them for the fourth quarter, and having a mini symposium for them to talk about what they really received from their fourth quarter. It's worked tremendously in area schools that I'm, have colleagues that will, that are more than willing to help me. But if we move forward and get 50, 60, 70 seniors on board, that's not something that I can do on my own. So that's where the, another guidance counselor would be able to help. I would love to look at restorative discipline or restorative justice, that model behind that. And with that comes a lot of communication. With that is a lot of FaceTime between teacher, student, and guidance counselor. That is something that I would love to be able to do. There was a lovely article, video on a inner-city school in San Francisco that ultimately said, rather than push students out of the classroom when they get in trouble and suspend them for a few days, or they're out of the classroom for an hour, we're going to do something called push-in model, where we have a guidance counselor or a BCBA go to the class that student is having difficulty with, have a conversation in the foyer, in the hallway, get them back to where they need to be, and get them back into the classroom. In order for that to happen, I would really feel that a guidance counselor would be a benefit. And then finally, just looking at the social-emotional counseling, department-wide, I think that's really important. What's great currently with the licensure for guidance counselors or adjustment counselors, specifically, I know about assumption, that if you go into counseling, you're getting a dual certification in adjustment as well as guidance, which makes sense, because now you're a school counselor. Because at the end of the day, if we're saying, I'm only a guidance counselor and I'm dealing with the academic piece and what you're doing afterwards, oh, you're having an emotional breakdown, go speak with the adjustment counselor, to me, doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So I love that that model is happening. I'd love to be able to get a third adjustment, or a third guidance counselor in the, the building at the high school. So that's the staff.
May I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
Are our current two guidance counselors sort of duly certified? I don't know if it's a separate certification, but do they have the adjustment counselor piece and guidance counselor piece now?
So what I can tell you is that both are doing essentially both, those jobs.
Sure.
I, the new guidance counselor that we just hired has dual certification. The other one, I'm not sure of.
Okay. So the person that you'd look to hire would in fact have the two pieces, or would you look to do, replace the adjustment counselor, cut and a guidance counselor, or is that person one?
Ideally, I'd like to be able to hire what I would say is a school counselor with.
Or do both.
With both.
Okay, thank you.
So it's 1.0?
1.0.
Okay.
Yes. So in essence, if you're, if we're looking at where that budget does, does it increase our budget? We do have a couple retirements that are at high step, that if I hire two science replacements, because there are two science teachers that are replacing, I could get three staff members with what we're paying those two at high level, or high step, if that makes sense.
Is that just a scenario, or you do have two?
I do have two. So that would technically be a salary increase to the total budget. What I would prefer as well would be a permanent sub, an additional permanent sub, if we can. Again, I think Wen and I have been analyzing, does it make sense to have a day-to-day sub to come in and pay that? Does it make sense to go and pay our teachers an additional 2150 to cover a period and burn them out? Because we do have some teachers that are covering two or three weeks, or two or three times a week, which is taking away their prep or their, their prep. So you're walking into the door and, oh, I have a prep today. Oh, no, you don't, because you're covering for another class. We're gonna pay you the 2250 or 2150. At some point, that can work and we save a little bit of money, but I'm also looking at where the teacher is and, and how they feel at the end of the day about getting the work that they need to do to cover for a colleague. So again, we would have to look at the price points, and we're only close to half, half, at, at the halfway mark at the, in the school year, but that's something that we would like to look at as well.
All right.
How many are in existence now, Mike?
We have one, one permanent sub.
One. And would you say that you have more than two staff members out every day?
Uh.
Much?
I don't have the, the data to support that, but I would say that safely, we would have more than one out. But that would also include professional development.
Oh, sure, 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 sure.
Anything, so.
If you're not in the classroom, you're.
Safely, I would, I would assume that we have more than one adult out of the building.
Okay, thank you.
So that second person would be busy, yeah.
Correct.
Probably paid about 5,000 for day-to-days and fill-ins, and 4,500 for permanent subs.
Justin, the high school?
Sure. Thank, okay, thank you.
No problem. So in terms of instructional needs, we're doing a lot of piloting right now, which I'm really excited about, because again, we're all about teaching and learning. We're all about supporting our teachers and also our students. We're all about differentiated instruction. I think the one-to-one Chromebooks, to me, again, it's not just a piece of technology that's in the room. I'm always asking the question of why do we have it? And I think honestly, it differentiates instruction for students if we do it the right way. If we create stations in the room, if we flip our classroom around, if we use Khan Academy, if we use various resources to the, to our fullest advantage, then we're meeting the, the needs of all learners in that room. And ultimately, our teachers are becoming facilitators and support resources rather than just spitting out content. So with that in mind, there's certain things that we're, we're piloting right now that I'd love to be able to bring on board at the high school, and Tanya is more than willing to take on something called News ELA, or I call it Newsella, but News ELA, but it's News ELA Pro, which we were introduced to it a couple years ago. We sort of modeled it at the high school. I think it's a fascinating app and a program, but essentially, it was getting current events, articles, newspapers, journals in front of students. That was, that was real, that was current, that was relevant. But what was great about it was that you had different reading levels. So you had a third-grade level, fifth-grade level, ninth-grade level, 12th-grade level, and that could switch with how students were assessed. So it was the same article, the same content, and what's really cool about that is because every, every student's comparing to see what is on the desk in front of their friends. And if we differentiate instruction, and it's something different in terms of the format or the template, someone sees that. So Jill Pillegallarani and I literally created a News, News ELA Pro account, and she took a third-grade reading level article, I had the ninth-grade reading level, and if you look at it quickly, the template, the format, the picture, it looks exactly the same if you click a glance at it. But when you read the phrases and the statements, they're completely different, and they label it with the grading level that you want to put at it. News ELA Pro would bring that to another level, where you have formative assessments, you have open responses that students can respond to, and that's on a Chromebook, which again, will align to your MCAS, that if we're doing it online, we might as well be trying it somewhere else, and we can do that now. And there's, there's site vocabulary words, and it's across the board. So when we talk about literacy, I don't know if you remember, last year, our MCAS Improvement Plan, we were talking about increasing literacy, coding, annotating. Some of us in the room might have been doing that last year, but that's something that we really looked at. But literacy across the board is math, history, music, science, and it's not just English. So there's content and topics all over the place. Even at Khan Academy, I had a teacher, art teacher yesterday, model Khan Academy and how she uses that in her art history class, which to me is great. And it can translate into Spanish. So now our foreign language teachers are using News ELA in Spanish class, at a third-grade reading level, which could be equivalent to a Spanish two or three, depending on where it is. So that to me is, it's a nice formative digital resource that I'd love to be able to do. If we did that in the high school and the middle school, it's, they, it was approximately $9 a seat, which they would cut that down to about, I believe they said $7,000, middle school, high school. So that would be a nice digital resource for our students, but also, also the teachers.
Is that an annual cost?
That is an annual cost, yes. So that's News ELA. The other piece that I wanted to look at was STEM Scopes, which is another digital curriculum that Tanya mentioned to me, but it's the resources, there's tools, there's a unit plan, there's embedded professional development for teachers, and embed state frameworks, and something called the Next Generation Science Standards that you are well aware of. And we're trying to figure out how we're going to incorporate that within our district and what resources we're going to include. This to me is a rela, relatively cheap resource. It's about $6 a seat, and I would do this and use this with our science teachers. Some of it is cookie cutter labs, but it's support that our teachers, especially our new teachers, would need, and it aligns to state frameworks. It's interactive, it ties into your Chromebooks, it goes right to your Google Classroom, you can assign various webinars, interactive labs through that as well. But again, this is something that I need buy-in from my teachers, so we're gonna pilot that in the next couple months, and those pilots are free. So that's something in terms of the instructional needs. The one last thing that I, I wanted to bring up was something called EduCere, which is educator, virtual education. I know we have VHS in the middle school and the high school. EduCere is something that we looked at for our summer school.
How do you spell it?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask that, but I was reading.
E-D-U-C-E-R-E.
Because the other two I knew about, but this one's new.
So EduCere is relatively new, yet again, I saw another district using it for summer school, and we were at a point a couple years ago where summer school fiscally did not work for us. We had three or four kids taking AP, I mean, like a summer school US history class, and we couldn't pay a teacher to do that. So we looked at, well, let's go to Bellingham or Milford for summer school, brick and mortar, or you can do the online piece, and we use EduCere. What I'd love to use EduCere for, and this is something that, do we need next year? Maybe not. Would I love to have a few seats so that I could create a flexible opportunity for some students? But the way that I'd look at this, it would be credit recovery. So if a student is failing at the first semester mark, realistically, how can they get to third and fourth quarter and get the grade that they can? So if they can't, I'd love to be able to go and say, well, we have EduCere, here's a virtual online platform for you to take. You're still in second semester physics, but you're also taking second, first semester physics online to be able to regain that credit. Or if you have a student who's out long-term for a medical leave, and we wanna be able to offer some sort of educational component, we would look at EduCere. Possibly, if a student's suspended for more than 10 days, discipline laws say that we still need to educate our students. How are we doing that? Are we finding home tutoring and paying for that, or do we look at an online platform? The difference between EduCere and VHS, to me, is that EduCere, you can do quarterly class, you could do a semester class. You can go and tell EduCere, hey, this is what, this is what we covered in semester one, match that and put that on an online platform, and they do that. And it's math state frameworks.
Mike, is it a, a lot, so VHS is a live teacher that reviews the work?
Yes.
Edgenuity is a computer-based teacher. What is this?
This would be a live teacher as well.
A live teacher, okay.
So there's a help desk, and there's somebody on call. I, it wasn't 24/7, but I believe it was 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Okay.
And they can get onto, I believe it's Google Hangout or equivalent to, and actually have a FaceTime conversation with that person. So that's something that I would like to be able to explore. For a full course, for a full year, it's $200 for the full course. But if we did a quarterly enrichment, we're looking at, you know, I don't know what they would call, they would charge us for that. But I, I put in 25 seats for credit recovery, because that, that does unfortunately happen, where we have students that need credit, and we know after second quarter that they're not making the grade. So what do we do? Just tell them, wait till June and we, we'll figure it out? Or can we do something like a night school equivalent and get the ball rolling to get that credit?
Are you thinking we would charge for that, or would it be part of the school day?
Um, I.
What are your initial thoughts, I guess, if I'd ask?
My, my initial thoughts is that the district would pay for it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So at, at our high school, if we have an eight, well, that's what we call an eighth credit, beyond our seven, students pay for it because it's outside of the day and they're, they're basically doing summer school, which they would pay for.
Sure.
In a more timely manner, sort of.
And I'd be, I'd be more than open to look at that and see the, the demographic of the student.
Sure, sure, sure. Thank you.
And do our students pay for summer school now?
They do.
If they go to Bellingham, I'm sure, right?
Even in town.
Oh, even in town?
And, and my question was actually.
I'm sorry.
Exactly the same as Tammy's, as for the live teacher. I was wondering if it was comparable to VHS? They have that really, they have that back and forth with.
They do.
Is it, it's.
So with VHS, my experience is that it's back and forth through email.
Right. That's VHS.
There's no piece with EduCere, there seems to be, you can make a phone call and get immediate response time, because there's somebody that's assigned as the math teacher to help with math, and there's FaceTime.
Gotcha.
I haven't seen that with VHS.
How much is VHS per, per full-year class?
That would be something I'd have to get.
Okay.
Get back to you on.
And just, just for the comparison?
I mean, I think VHS has some, I mean, there's definitely some pros there, you know, with it, with the AP pieces behind it. I think VHS has the name brand as well, and a, a lot of districts do use it. I don't know where EduCere is from a country standpoint, in terms of a part, it could be the Midwest, but I think they're out of Michigan. I think it's that accent that I hear on the phone, so. No, I'm sorry, it's Philly, Philadelphia, so. But they're, they've been great with me, because I've honestly scrambled a couple years ago to figure out where do I put these seven kids for summer school? Because I, I fiscally, we were losing money. Wen was telling me, we're not doing this. And I said, I completely agree with you. And, and we were able to do it. So, I mean, another just instructional need, the Advanced Placement Mass Insight was something that I think we'll be able to save money on. We, we spent $10,000 for Mass Insight, that was a three-year grant that we did. We, we spent probably another $5,000 for transportation to Saturday School. Other districts that are out of that three-year pilot, essentially just pick and choose certain programs that they want. So do we want that teacher to get AP certified in science in the summer? What's the cost to? Let's do that. Do we want math students to go over to the Saturday School at whatever high school it is and pay for that with a, quote, exemplary teacher? We can pay for that. So the $15,000 budget line item that we had, I'd be requesting about 5,000 to do something that would be supplemental for that fourth year, because I don't wanna lose that momentum with my AP.
I would agree.
The, the other things are just. I mean, Sean mentioned the SolidWorks license, that's through the tech budget with 3D CAD and manufacturing. I will tell you that we have some great teachers. That are thinking outside the box, so they just needed the resources. And you know, we've heard Mr. Pilling with robotics and manufacturing. Damian Goddett is bringing a lot of attention to video. And we're part of the PBS NewsHour Learning Lab. They came out and we had two people, one was coming out of Miami, the other one I think was out of Chicago. And they spent the entire weekend filming the history of the valley and all the mills. And I'm hopeful that that will actually air on, on PBS. So he's looking for some equipment. We're always looking for Verney or Probeware with science and math. I will say that i- if you do come to our school and actually take a seat in some of our desks. You'll notice that we have original desks, student desks that are attached from, you know, table to seat. And other rooms we have relatively new desks. I would like to start rotating and purchasing some new desks and equipment in the classes. So that possibly we can get desks to get, to come together in circles. I mean, we, there's so many new desks that are out there that are, that are more, let's say inclusive. And allows kids to be able to move around in the classroom a little bit more. The ones that we have are uncomfortable and they're 1970. And they've lasted and they're great quality. But to move them into a box of four is very difficult. Teachers are doing it, but that was something that Mr. Porter did a few years ago. And we, I haven't asked for desks in the classroom. So that's something else that we'd like to do. The last thing I would say is that looking at the comparative from this year's budget to next year. I don't see a huge increase in my budget. Looking at department-wise supplies, right now, the increase. And it aligns very well with what Blackstone Millville supports. Is $1,755.95. So when I say it's concise, it's fair, it's to the point, but it also looks at teaching and learning. That's what I'm doing. That's the budget that I'm going to be looking for at some point when I come back. So there's no real increases, but we're still moving forward. But again, you know, we're not looking at textbooks, we've been able to do that and that push has been there. And we're just looking at what we need to do to prioritize, to still move, move forward without breaking the bank. And luckily this year with what we're looking for, we're there. I don't know where that will be in year two or three or four, however. Long you want in terms of that budget process, but I think we're in a good place in terms of moving forward. Oh, my, my apologies. I didn't actually talk about anything with the facility in the bill, in the building. There are things that are, that are happening in our building that we definitely need improvements on. You know, we're looking at certain doors for, you know, security of labs. We're looking at doors to prevent, you know, the conversations and the classroom dynamics from one room to the other. Because we have lovely foyers with no doors there. Willie Bacon has mentioned that we do have an old tractor that he's been able to put in some money and fix. But that's something that we desperately need as a tractor for snow removal and everything else that we're looking to do. We're just fixing the tractor as long as possible, but it's going to go at some point. And I would think if it doesn't happen next year, the year after and possibly leasing a tractor. And the ones that we're looking at is probably about a $55,000 tractor with parts and whatever else that needs. My apologies, I don't know.
So what did we buy, a lawnmower? When we bought, we bought a tra, a lawn, I thought it was a tractor. Do you know what we bought?
I think it's a zero-turn lawnmower.
When it was Dr. Davis's purchase, it was a lawnmower, not a tractor.
No, you want a, they want a lawnmower, a lawnmower. So anything that's designed to cut grass is technically a lawnmower, a tractor is bigger than that. Not, not on a big one like that.
May I just ask a question? So Mike, one of my concerns for years and, and is something I think we've spoken about. And I've certainly talked, talked to Mr. Goulet since my daughter has reached high school level is study halls. And in your presentation here, I don't hear anything that helps kind of shift kids to a more conducive learning environment than a study hall. And I know when I went up for various things and we've had conversation and I've talked to teachers, they say, you know, that's a budget thing. Is it truly a budget thing or is it, you know, is there a way to give kids an opportunity to learn for six hours versus five? What, and, and you know, is it a numbers thing where you just don't have enough kids to fill an additional? English class or a, a social studies elective? Or is it that kids would prefer study halls? I mean, I know my personal child didn't ask for a study hall, keeps getting them, I keep going through guidance to get her out of them. But I think I would love to see a day where B M R students are learning for six hours or, you know, as many hours and minutes as we can.
Sure. I mean, I think, I think it's a good question and I think honestly, part of that comes down to financial and the lack of staff that we have. I know Uxbridge is some, it was a school district at the high school that looked at it. And I believe he needed three more full-time teachers to be able to fill in every single spot. On the master schedule, so there was no holes. So study halls are created because there are gaps in the schedule. Because there's literally no other teacher to be able to fill that section. So when we have seven courses or seven sections and they meet six times a day. If we don't have enough section or enough teachers to fill in that section, that turns into a study hall. You know, we are exploring looking at enrichment courses that could allow students to be able to take further courses there. But quite honestly, some students use study hall, that structured room, that structured time. A lot of our seniors are using that time. You know, that, that's the internship opportunity, that's where we're able to hold that gap. So that sophomore that was here, she had a hole in her schedule, so she was able to get that, that internship in place of the study hall. So that, that to me, I think would be the, the big hurdle that we would have to go, go after is looking at. Again, don't quote me on this, but I'm, I'm, I'm assuming based off of the number of holes and the number of study halls and the number of students. Probably looking at three more full-time teachers to, to be able to do that.
But if you increase your, if you increase your internship program. Then that's less spots to fill because those students are out in the community for those hours, right?
And I will say again, I don't have the data to support it right now. But I would say that we have less students that are enrolled in study halls than we did in years past. And part of that is we want to push students to be able to take more electives if it's available to them. We want some students to take an internship or an independent study. And teachers don't get paid for those independent studies, but those are things that have been put into place. But unfortunately, with the number of that, that sequence of courses that kids want and that matrix. Sometimes whatever students are taking and there's a lot of singletons there, there's nothing left in place. Other than either an elective that they don't want, they don't need, or it's a study hall. But I would say based off of what Uxbridge did and the conversations I've had with that principal. He needed support, budget support to, I believe he needed three more additional teachers to, to be able to do that. And we've lost a few in the last six years. And we've lost a foreign language teacher, which is five sections that could have been plugged in somewhere.
Sure.
So that's, I, I guess it's a partial answer to your question.
I would just respectfully ask to think about that as you do the scheduling. And you know, can we pay someone the 20, 250 or whatever that was and do a career enrichment class? When, when students are saying, you know, this is a piece that we're missing, can we, can we make that a content? Area versus just a study hall? Like I get it, I get study halls are an easy way. Kids, kids who are, are studious do use it, but they could be, in my opinion, they could be learning something else and do homework at home.
Sure.
So, thank you.
My apologies to my colleagues, I told them I'd be up here for five minutes. I don't know why, but it always seems like I'm up here for 40 minutes to two hours, so. Listen, everyone in Blackstone Millville, baby's not here yet, so. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Good luck, Mike.
Good luck.
Be careful driving.
Yeah, be careful driving. You don't want to beat your eyes to the window.
And this is Kurt Hoard, middle school, hello.
Welcome.
Thank you. I feel like I'm getting sick as I sit here, so. We were talking about that earlier. Puffing on me for two weeks now.
Thank you. Thank you.
The first thing that I just wanted to bring up is the extracurricular activities. Because when, when asked me to do the budget book, one of the highlights was that we had increased 600% of our after-school activities. However, this year, when I came in, I was given 10.8. And I went to Wen, I said, there's no way I can even run the most important year-long after-school activities with that amount. So just increasing, which is what we had to find this year. We had to increase over $3,000 just to have the NJHS, PBIS, STEM and STUCO and Healthy Start. Which many, many students access. PBIS, all, all of those, our STEM Club on Saturday is going, is actually, one of the two teams actually is going to the state championship. So, and that, I, and to do the sign-ups. Sean helped me figure out how to do it so it could turn off, but it didn't really turn off. And so all weekend I watched as people signed up. Because even though it said this club is full, people were still signing up. So like the STEM Club was one of the first ones to fill up very quickly in the fall. And unfortunately, even for the STEM Club, in order to do those competitions and stuff, we actually had to give a $57 user fee. So that they could compete in those club, in the competitions. So those and the office detention is, is something that is needed, yes.
Did you say you increased this year's budget already?
Well, we had to find money elsewhere that we had in our budget and donate it towards the after-school programs.
But to only do those four or five, whatever.
Right, all of the focus clubs that we are running is, I did a fundraiser at the beginning of the year about energy saving.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Which is kind of a highlight and I mentioned to faculty at the faculty meeting last time that this building spends $100,000 a year in energy. Today alone, I went around turning off lights and it's just, like I'm used to, where I was. If, you know, if you're, everything had sensors and I'd be in my office and I'm not moving that much, the lights would turn off. That's fine, I'll do this and turn them back on. But at least I'm saving, saving energy. And so that is something, I'm even having the custodians during the break, they're going to be checking, because we do have sensors in many areas. However, they're 15 years old now, so they're going to be checking the sensitivity. I reached out to Sean about the computers always being on. I tell that's my own father-in-law who used to leave his on all the time, that's like leaving your car running 24/7. And something is going to break. The next thing that's on my list was, I know at the elementary level, they had empowering writers. So across the board textbooks and, you know, curriculum support for every single subject is really needed at the middle school. And when, if there's a program that goes K8, I'm very interested in keeping something that was started in the elementary. And using it in the middle school and keeping that same common language in what we're working on. So Paul's looked into that and that is something that we're looking for, because they're going to be adding it for K2. And I said, well, could we please add also six to eight? The English teachers would really like to have some kind of writing curriculum. For a foreign language, for Spanish, this year is the first year we have a cohort in grade eight that she is working on. So that when they go up to the high school, they can start ahead in Spanish. However, the Spanish textbook is from 1996. I found workbooks, I don't know why we have them, they're all written in with the answers. And the pages are just falling out of these books. So, and these are from 1996. We also have ones from 1986, that's the snowman in the window over there. So if you went by how many years between purchasing just by copyright, we should be on our second set of Spanish books at this year, at this point. We're looking to use the, I'm not sure how to say it, so it's written right there for you, because I do not speak Spanish. Avin Samfimos, I think? That is the exact same textbook that's used at the high school. So Mrs. Rydal would like to continue curriculum working. On the PD day, she worked with the high school Spanish teachers to align her curriculum. So that students could be somewhat prepared for when they got to the high school for Spanish. The textbooks for math, this would be the year three of implementation, so I'm hoping that that was already built in and we will get that. That's for the big ideas with that. From the year that you purchased those books, you get six years' worth of the workbooks. So I don't know if people knew that or remembered that, so this, for next year, it would be for, for eighth grade. Social studies. I would like to get some test, so in social studies for, for DESI is requiring the Department of Ed. Grade eight by 2019, 2020 school year, that it has to be a full year of civics in grade eight. Presently, we do world history with a little bit of US history in grade eight before they go on the trip. The, so we're looking for two class, you know, two 70 student additions and two, two teacher additions. Just for grade eight to be able to do civics. I would like it next year, because I see, it seems to be in education, we're always building the train while driving it. So this, if we had a year in advance, we could have that curriculum ready for when it does have to go into session. However, if you look into the civics, which kind of piggybacks on what Sean was saying, if we were to go with Chromebooks with that civics alone. It would be just $6 a student to access that if we had Chromebooks. All of these, most of these textbook purchases. Could go a whole lot cheaper if we had Chromebooks for six to eight. Because the Chromebook access a year, per year charge is a lot less.
Do you have a, a roundabout dollar amount on these?
I only have the civics ones, the, like the health, I've never heard of a health book online. I'm not coming from either district I was in, that was one-to-one, so we've always had hard textbooks. But that certainly, if, if I did know, I would spend more time if I knew for sure. That we were going to have Chromebooks for grade six to eight. The health textbooks are also from 1999 that are unusable. Because at some point, some of the information is not valid. And so it's actually detrimental to use the textbook. And totally awesome health, I don't think is going to excite the students in wellness. And right now, we presently purchase Choices Magazine through Scholastic. That is almost $300 a year, along with it's, it's almost $200 for a health database. So we're spending $500 a year where if we had a class set, because health is just a quarter per year. Most students, that's what they have, there's not really a need for student access.
Is there a need for, in health, is there a need for a textbook? Is there enough information, even if you don't have a Chromebook program?
Well, she's using, she's using the Choices Magazine, but that doesn't cover everything that she needs. And the Choices Magazine is different every single month, every single year. But Mrs. Blanchard felt very strongly.
That the textbook is needed.
A textbook would, would help her. I thought, she did give me, I didn't bring it with me, but she did give me the exact textbook. But, and it was a middle school-based comprehensive wellness program textbook that she could use. And she would, she would be able to get everything she needed for all the grade, for all three grades throughout that one book.
And you only want 35, so obviously they stay in the classroom?
Right, because it's just a quarter, the stu- Right, because it's just a quarter. The students are not, don't have to take home. There's not homework that you would need that textbook for. So, that's not a book that I would want to purchase something, you know, a student license.
Right.
Because it wouldn't be cost-effective. The next big thing is library books and materials. You know, you can look around and it, by looking at the spine mostly, it might not seem it's so bad. I found this book on the shelf. Harry Potter, even though twenty years, people still want to read it, it was not covered the correct way because covering supplies have not been purchased for a very long time. If you buy the materials to keep and cover the books, they last a lot longer. My own classroom library, the, my school librarian used to laugh because I used to compete with her. I would buy clear contact paper at Target and cover my own personal classroom library books. Mine would last for four or five years. My colleague didn't do it. It lasted one year. Maybe even one student checking it out, it could get destroyed. So, I would like to be able to purchase more books. We do get some books from, some fiction books from when we do the Scholastic Book Fair. However, we're limited to being able to get the books that are in the book fair. So, if there isn't, this book isn't in the book fair, I can't replace it because I don't have access to buy it. Then we also have a lot of books here that are the exact book that I read when I was in junior high. Yellowed pages, love wonderful outfits. This is an excellent bound book, so if you purchase from Follett, they're Follett-bound books. They come with a guarantee. If they fall apart, they will replace it. It's also, it's called PermaBound. So, the book itself will stay in decent shape. However, this one is quite old. The main purchases for the library that we'd like to see, though, comes with the nonfiction. We have many nonfiction, nonfiction has not been replaced since two thousand and five. That's the last time we purchased books for the library. Not counting what we've purchased at the book fair. Unfortunately, we can't purchase nonfiction text at the, at the book fair because those nonfiction are mostly to be read by students for enjoyment, not necessarily for research. So, this is a book that could actually be detrimental. It's sixteen years old on choosing a career as a paralegal. Probably will have misinformation in here. That's just an example. Anyone famous beyond nineteen ninety-eight, when Brad Pitt was twenty years younger on the cover here. We don't have them. We have a, I didn't bring it up with me, but a book about the US presidents. It stops at George W. Bush. So, it's difficult to have students come in and do research or, you know, tell every student in here, like I've always done and I've always had in all the schools, every student needs to be carrying a personal reading book. We don't have a lot of choices that the kids really want to engage in. So, I don't want an exorbitant amount. I was looking for like forty-five hundred dollars for books and five hundred dollars for supplies to cover those books. If we purchase them through Follett and they need, you know, they have a dust cover, it comes already, they come already catalogued for you with the spine labels and covered. But we would like some supplies to cover. A lot of the books that are still on the shelf that are in, are not covered. We have a lot of hardcover that are not even covered properly.
Tanya, I'm sure you don't have this with you, but could you get it? What is our numbers for circulation at the middle school library?
I'm not even sure, with the antique system that we have in the library, that I can get that. I can ask Mrs. Tasker for it. If we had Follett Destiny, that would be something you could easily. Right now, we, we can't even print out a list of every single student who has a book. The system doesn't allow that. I can get the book, I know once it's overdue, but I can't just print a list. The system we have that, it doesn't allow for that.
And the reason I ask that is I think with the, with the one-to-one Chromebooks and, you know, Kindles and all of those other non-page-turning books, I'd be interested to see how much use is happening. Because I haven't held a real book.
Yeah. I think, I don't think you're going to, personally, I wouldn't, because I have come in here and looked at every single shelf and just see what books we have. And there's a lot of books that I wouldn't read. There was actually some books, I asked Mrs. Tasker, why in the world is this book on the shelf? It's an adult book. It was a donation. That's, that's wonderful. We have donations. However, they need to be appropriate for middle school level. So, I just think, you know, right near you over there, all those yellow and the blue ones are all Nancy Drew and Hardy Boys books. You know, we might have enjoyed those. However, I don't think students are checking them out right now. So, I certainly can ask Mrs. Tasker, though, if there's a way to pull that circulation. However, I'm not sure that our database system can do that.
Okay, thank you.
For general pairs, if you've come up the driveway and around in the parking lot, there are some large potholes that we need some repairs. This year, we had to have two catch basins repaired. That is the drainage part. I didn't know that that was the name of those until Mr. Hebert told me that. He also told me that we need six batteries for the tile floor cleaner. Otherwise, we wouldn't be able to keep running the tile floor cleaner, which is used constantly. We also need a carpet cleaner. The one we have is the original one we got from this building, so it's fifteen years old. And we would also need three vacuums because we use those on a daily basis. And again, just that the textbook cost, we could reduce and we could also get more. Like Mike said, if we had STEM scopes at the middle school, we don't presently have, we, social studies needs textbooks, English needs textbooks, science needs textbook. I'm just trying to see what we could do year one in getting some of the textbooks replaced. But if we were Chromebooks one-to-one, there would probably be a lot more we can do with the same amount of money. For staff requests, I just have this packet here.
Thank you.
I know that the school had a technology teacher cut. I'm not sure exactly when. That position was Dr. Laports, who has been the vice principal, the assistant principal here for at least six years. So, I would say it would be at least six years ago that that position was cut. However, in two thousand and sixteen, Department of Ed passed the Massachusetts Digital Literacy and Computer Science Curriculum and Framework. There are aspects of the digital literacy that every teacher can and should be teaching in their class. However, when it comes to the computer science, you need a technology teacher for that. So, that's the, the one request besides the one that Loretta already spoke about earlier for special ed. So, what you have in front of you is just a overview of each of the standards and then a description of the practices expected. The document's much larger than that, but I did not want to waste the paper.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jean.
Come.
Come.
All three.
Rise.
Is the heat on a timer or something?
I know. I think they decided we must be done because it's getting cold in here.
And big windows.
Good evening.
Good evening. Doing great. How are you doing, Mr. Tringali?
Great. Fire up to be here.
We're glad to have you.
Well, we are not as nearly as charming as those second graders, but we will try.
Okay.
Mrs. Brown, you're always charming.
Oh, my gosh, thank you. Who would like to go?
Well, the three of us are together because in a lot of ways, our buildings are knitted together. So, we have, Carol and I, we have a lot of things extremely in common because we play off each other for a lot of them. But, so Carol and I talk a lot about basically bodies, positions, and Paul is going to kind of cover his own as well, but he has more of some of the curriculum, some of the items. At least my building is over fifty years old. I could fill a notebook with all the things that we need in terms of nuts and bolts. There's an MSBA project in the works, so let that run its course and take that from there. So, again, we're going to talk mainly about positions right now.
Okay.
Carol and I have been wrestling with this a little bit back and forth. When I came on, the first thing that caught my attention is our reading scores. So, I really want to hit literacy hard. A lot of the things that I have on my list and Carol's and hers are connected to literacy right now. And one thing that we're both asking for is a one-point-oh full-time equivalent reading specialist in addition to what we currently have.
So, one-point-oh full-time, you're both going to ask for that.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
So, really two.
Two, correct.
Yes.
Okay.
And we're looking at some other things as well. We're looking to expand some other things, like, again, we're shared. So, right now, our library is staffed by a paraprofessional, a teacher's aide. And right now, they are a point-six, which means the library is open three days out of five. The other two days, it's not. So, what we're each looking for is a point-two and a point-two library paraprofessional, and if you add that to what we have, library would be full-time. So, a full-time librarian. Similar thing with technology. We share technology with Millville Elementary. So, again.
The person goes back and, oh, they do.
Yes.
She's with us three days and with Millville two days.
Yeah. So, similarly there, we're asking for a point-two technology teacher, point-two technology teacher. So, that would bring technology up to one-point-oh full-time. And now, right now, we currently have a permanent sub at JFK and permanent sub at AFM. And Carol and I, we're on the phone every morning back and forth. We have our, our schedule of our call-outs every day and we look at it. We try to figure where we're going to put the bodies. So, two of us work together truly placing subs, so we're each asking for a point-five perm sub and a point-five perm sub. So, it's really going from two perm subs.
To three.
To three. Total between our building.
Yeah, and I, and I do want to add that our focus is absolutely literacy. I mean, we've been talking about this for years now. And the fact that our reading specialists provide preps for teachers. That's not to say that what they're, what they're doing, I mean, they work hand-in-hand with teachers. But when you see students either every other week or once a week, you know, we know that that's certainly not effective and it's certainly not meeting the needs of especially the struggling teachers, nor is, uh, students, nor is it meeting the needs of those students who need that extension and that enrichment. So, we really want to focus on a plan where we can free up our reading specialists to provide intervention, whether it's pull-out, a small group or push-in models, and, and focus truly on the needs of students. Right now, that is absolutely not the case. I can tell you that my reading specialist, and I think the same holds true for you, Mrs. Torvey spends two-thirds of her time with us every week providing preps. Which leaves her one-third of her time to work with struggling readers. Right now, her caseload is about thirteen. I can tell you that we have far more many students who are struggling than thirteen in grades three, four and five combined. So, our Title One money, I know that Maloney was cut. I have, I do have some Title One services. Mrs. DePippo, our Title One teacher, services eight students in my building. Eight.
But she, she does service several at JFK, so we're not saying that's, that's all she services. So, again, we are shared back and forth. But again, that, that was the amazing thing when I came on, you're coming from where you're sitting to where I'm sitting right here. I didn't really understand what the literacy block looked like. And what that is, is they get that every other week. The whole class leaves their homeroom class and they arrive at the door of the literacy teacher. They take on all, you know, eighteen, twenty, twenty-two students. And anyone who knows anything about reading knows, not every one of those twenty-two kids is going to be at the same reading level. But yeah, they're delivered to the door of the literacy special, and that's what they do.
Yeah, so every class K through four goes once a week, and they also go every other week. Grade five goes once a week. I'm sorry, they go every other week because they have health. So, I mean, that's, that, that's just the harsh reality of where we're at. We know that we're looking at our MCAS scores. We're looking at the results of our STAR assessment. We're looking at the results of our Fountas and Pennell Benchmark Assessments.
So, if you, if you each had an additional reading specialist, they, the students could get more one-on-one help, clearly, but they could go more than every other week or once a week?
Well, what, the, the additional reading specialists would be there to provide intervention. So, it could be, I mean, again, you have to take a look at the need and figure out the scheduling, but, but ultimately, what would be happening is that these students would be receiving support every day of the week.
And one way we're doing that is by making literacy not a special any longer. So, we need to create some specials. So, that's why we're trying to expand library, trying to expand technology. So, that will enable the reading specialists to be reading specialists and not a prep.
So, that, that would free up Mrs. Torvey.
Exactly. Mrs. Tasker.
That time, or that, that time that the current reading specialists, the two-thirds, the, the point-twos throughout would then, that they would shift there. Okay. I was going to ask that. Thank you.
Who then covers the prep, the, the extra library time, the extra technology time? Gotcha.
And, and truly the, in case the library, I mean, that, that's a bargain.
Yeah.
It's being won by a paraprofessional. It really is. So, that's a, we have to capitalize on that. She's doing a fantastic job. She really is. Every time I go in there, I'm like, wow, she's really doing a great job for what she has. So, you know, it's not a knock on her in any way. She's doing a great job with the kids.
So, the additional point, that was a question I had. So, the additional point four between the two of you would then extend that paraprofessional time versus a media specialist or a librarian. It's a, it's a continuation of the para.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
And also just like to add that we are asking for each of us for a point-five building substitute. And I, and I just, you know.
Yeah, that's the one that took us from two to three.
Yeah, it took us from two to three. And, and so what we're finding, you know, that's happening is also the PD. We have trainings that teachers go to. Those take up substitutes. I'll give you an example. Tomorrow, we have CPI training. And we need substitutes to cover for those teachers, and we have some other teachers out. So, sometimes what we find is that we are piecemealing coverage. And if you're taking a specialist, a PE teacher, a music teacher, an art teacher or a technology teacher, you're canceling someone's prep, so those students do not get that so that we can cover a classroom. Even though we do have a bank of day-to-day subs, we're, we're constantly interviewing. You call, they don't necessarily.
Take it.
They're not necessarily able to come in. So, it's, it's just not reliable. And one of the things that we know is that when you have substitutes, just, we rely heavily on them. When there is a teacher out, that the teaching and the learning is continuing. So, you can imagine your child in a classroom where I have to piecemeal coverage and I may have three or four adults in there. That is absolutely not effective for anyone.
And you can talk about the social, emotional needs of students. So, a student who is on, having some difficult times, he might have three different teachers in his room in the course of a day. Actually, I was talking with Monica Carty. You heard Sean singing her praises earlier. I was talking to her today. I said, if we took technology from a point-six to a one-point-oh, what would that do for you? She said, right now, at a point-six, she sees her students nineteen times in the course of a school year. Nineteen times. So, it's a total of about fourteen hours of technology instruction in an entire year.
Each student, so a fifth grader has technology nineteen times.
Nineteen times.
It's every other week.
And, and what she said is because of the quirks of the schedule, Martin Luther King Day and things like that, a class that she saw yesterday, she's not going to see again until January twenty-sixth.
So, in terms of student learning, if I'm not in front of it, I repeat what you just taught me four weeks ago or three weeks ago or whatever. I don't get to build on anything because I don't remember what I did.
Oh, and I would also like to share that I'm going to have to add a classroom teacher solely based on numbers.
Oh, what grade level?
Well, currently, currently I have four sections at third grade. I will need five sections for next year because we are going from a current enrollment of ninety to one-hundred-and-eighteen next year. Second graders coming up.
Second grade is one-hundred-and-eighteen.
Correct. So, I need to add a section which will give me a class size of about twenty-four students. Grade four, I have currently one-hundred-and-eight students. I have five sections. I will be decreasing that by a section because I have ninety students currently in third grade who will be fourth graders next year. So, I do have a section in fourth grade, a teacher who I can move to a third or fifth because fifth grade, I'm currently at four. because fifth grade, I'm currently at four sections of 98 students. Next year, I will be at 108, and I will need five sections there.
So in those shifts, we still need one more person?
I have one shift, but I do need to hire another. Yes.
And in terms of my enrollment, I just need to move a teacher from one grade to another. I don't need to add any positions. I just need to move a, a position.
Okay.
So right now, you have 108 fourth graders-
Yes.
In five sections?
I have five sections, yes. So currently in third grade, I have four sections. Fourth grade, I have five sections. Fifth grade, I have four sections. Next year, it will be five, four, five.
Gotcha.
What is our current fourth grade in Millville? How many kids though?
Twenty-six students.
So 108 fourth graders at four sections would be 27? Just throwing that out there for fifth grade. I'm gonna be Wendy for a minute. A fifth grade at 27 kids per classroom is a lot different than 27 kindergarteners, so.
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I heard you correctly.
Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
Any, anybody else?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Again, it's good to see everyone again. For the purposes of Millville, we'll start with the personnel. Starting off, we want to reinstate the halftime custodian back into the budget for FY19, starting on July 1st, to keep the maintenance of the building and facilities up. Quite simply, the largest ticket items you're gonna see on this punch list in front of you are capital items for Millville Elementary School, which belong to town, or our repairs and replacement projects that we have to take on as a school department. Capital items for Millville Elementary School that require attention and time of the town of Millville are the parking lot and roadway repair and repaving, the water tank for the fire department, as well as for our fire suppression systems within the school, windows to be replaced, and, uh, work to be done on the fire alarm and smoke detector systems. These are already items that have been discussed, as well as the oil pipe, which has been turned in to the town some time ago, over the course of more than four meetings now with town officials. In Section B, the items that Mr. Langto, Mr. Boyko, Mr. Lipsit, who's currently out on leave due to a surgery, and is replaced by Mr. Staples, in FY19 would be working to continue the replacement of inlays for each classroom along with carpet. The more inlaid and carpets that we are lucky enough to work on. If we did four rooms at a time, it comes out to $4,027, a little bit of change over $4,000. If we did more classrooms, the price comes down.
Do they all need it? How many classrooms need?
All of them.
Oh.
And we did start in the main office. We did not do anything this year. So it's time to get back on to our inlaid and carpet replacements. They've not been touched since, uh, I believe, the inception of the school. And the school coming online in 1992, September of 1992. Again, it's just a lot of wear and tear and a lot of time. The reason we worked first on the office was because the insurance company was citing us as having tears that were covered with tape. And that just was not acceptable, and it was a hazard for children as well as other adults that could trip and harm themselves when they came into our office. We have taken care of the main office with that replacement, but that's why you're looking at the replacement of inlays and carpeting listed in the punch list. The computer rooms, I know earlier you heard from Mr. Bozon regarding technology and the needs of technology. Our computer room is upstairs in the second floor and in the early fall, September, and in part October as well as June, late May, and all of June. Upstairs can get 90-plus, sometimes 100 degrees. The computers are older, as he's mentioned to you earlier. And in order to maintain our computer lab upstairs and make sure it doesn't completely go down on us, we really need some form of air conditioning and AC units put in. So that's why you're looking at that second item. I believe also, Mr. Bozon brought up the fact that our HVAC system is always worked on for service and/or update. Each time we call the vendor, it is $360, $360 per call, and we have at least five to seven or eight or more calls in a given year. So you'll see under the HVAC, if we were to get the software that Mr. Bozon mentioned earlier all in one shot in this budget, we don't have to keep paying a little bit at a time, as you see in this number, and that would go away. And we would have the capacity to service it into in-house. Replacement of the intrusion alarm system, you see that as well. Paint for the auditorium. We did start with Mr. Lipsit painting in the summer. Unfortunately, when he got hurt and needed surgery, he had to stop, but we would wanna finish that painting in that space. It's been quite a while since it had been painted, and we were working on it prior to his leave, but that estimated cost remaining comes out to the exact number you're looking at on the paper for a reason. So my first year as a principal, the last item here on this punch list that's important to note is the replacement of the oil tank monitor. My first year as a principal, Mr. Langto decided to teach me a lesson. So sometimes you learn the lesson easy and easily, and sometimes you learn it with some difficulty. I'm not a little guy. I tend to think I'm pulling a bit of weight, and I'm a big guy. And Mr. Langto and I lifted a, a cover to the oil tank and dip-sticked the oil tank to find out how much oil we have. And he keeps a little report card telling us how much oil every time he does the dip-stick. That monitor that failed a long time ago, and if you're asking exactly when, I just can't recall. But that one time I had to go out and lift that cover was enough for me to not, I, I don't know how I didn't blow my back out. It's not a light item. Mr. Langto, and Mr. Boyko, and Mr. Lipsit have done it for, I wanna say since 2003, to my knowledge. Now, that's not to say that's when the monitor went down. But, um, we really need that monitor replaced. It needs to be done. Heaven forbid, Mr. Langto, Mr. Boyko, or any other member of our staff were to hurt themselves. The liability is not something I wanna discuss publicly for not only the committee, but, um, all involved. And quite honestly, it's, it's just not doable going forward. The oil tank has some issues with regard to the pipe. We've, we've talked to the town about that. But as you can see, these items aren't anything to do with curriculum and instruction. Other than the personnel up front that you see on the punch list, a lot of what we're talking about so far and our budget needs for Millville Elementary School are related to the facilities and the space. And it's just time to start incrementally or in some way picking at this list and making it a priority moving forward for all involved. That's not easily done for the committee. That's not easily done for the town. We're hypersensitive to that. But if we don't continue to have the dialogue and the discussion and continue to bring it forward, these items will continue to slip, and ultimately, it'll cost us the ability to use the space, for lack of a better way of putting it. This is definitely something that keeps Mr. Langto and Mr. Boyko and Mr. Lipsit and others up at night. I will tell you, the little bit of snow that came today, the gentleman was in at 5:00 in the morning and started clearing snow so we could open on time. This is a very dedicated gentleman and works really hard, as all the faculty and staff at Millville Elementary do. I just wanted to start with that first set of needs because it's the largest piece of our budget and our budget needs moving forward. In terms of the reading specialists, we too want to see the reading specialists made full-time. To do that, I've talked ad nauseam with Mr. Eisenberg over the last two years to change him over to a, from a .6 to a 1.0 full FTE, have the kids be more active and get them out and playing more outdoors and just having more activity in their life. That's not to say that technology or library, media aren't important. They are. I, I just think in the dialogue we've had in terms of us as a faculty and a staff, it's something that we see we wanna keep up in the area of health, wellness, and PE and physical education. Finally, we put in a permanent building sub, an additional permanent building sub for the reasons that Mrs. Brown and Mrs., and Mr. Tringali brought up earlier. I think that's very well stated.
So you currently have one?
We currently have one. And so tomorrow, we have one person who is splitting time. She's Mon-, uh, sorry, Wednesday and Friday, our building sub becomes our library and media specialist. And on Monday, Tuesdays, and Thursdays, she's our building sub. So tomorrow, we have training, and while we send faculty to training, I have day-to-day subs coming in to cover. And we've had people who've taken maternity leaves. We've, we've handled that through postings and the process that the contract calls for and done a good job to point. But should we decide to do any professional development or any future work, whether it be CPI or safety care training or anything alike, we have to have some kind of an additional person online to support such professional development initiatives for our faculty and staff.
And it's important to note that the, the bank of subs that I mentioned earlier are for every building in the district.
So believe it or not, we actually borrow or overrun each other sometimes. So I would've called for a sub who's coming to my building off the same list.
Right.
And Mrs. Brown calls the same person five minutes after me and finds out.
Well, it's not a coordinated, there's not a one person calling for the, we have three space. It's each of you calling for, wow.
Do we have any permanent subs that are floaters right now? They all, it's just all building-based?
They're building-based.
All building-based.
Did we used to have a-
We have, to that point, if I may, Madam Chair.
Sub program?
Sorry.
We ever, did this district ever have a coordinated-
Not anyone who arranged for subs for the building. No.
Wow.
If I could, Madam Chair, so to that question, Mrs. Vanaco asked, we will text each other when we hit a roadblock or we have a problem. And, um, I'll take a position just randomly off the top of my head. Nurse had a family emergency need to leave Millville Elementary. I'll reach or text out saying I have a nurse who's out of the building. Can, I borrow one of yours, and can you backfill that position? That's how we've coordinated. We have a teacher who magically is out last minute. We're coordinating that amongst ourselves. That's usually how we either end our day or start our day, with texts, and we've done that. So, just to answer the question. In terms of the curriculum and instruction materials, the first two items, A and B, are already captured in the budget process. I believe Mrs. Cobb and Mr. Himmelberger already brought that up in your workshop earlier. Those were taken care of through the Assistant Superintendent, who was with us up until last year. He had captured those costs and has that already picked up. The last item, however, are Chromebook and/or iPads for us to become compliant and be able to roll out MCAS come next year. Because after this year, we're gonna have to be testing four and five as well, eventually three, four, and five. So to have that capacity-
Are yours in addition to the one Sean asked for, or are they the same?
Same.
Same.
But I wanted it captured on this punch sheet for you so you know. We're trying to build the scale over the window of time, being a little strategic in our thinking and our action. That's how we've kind of worked amongst the three of us, but also whether it be Mr. Bozon or others, where our priorities have been. To the question earlier asked regarding enrollment, our enrollment is, is, we're well. We're, we're holding serve well. We just received the census numbers from Millville for the incoming kindergarten. They pretty much line up with what we received last year. When we received it, I believe it was approximately 21 last year. We received 20 this year. We wound up with 38 kids to open our school year this year. So again, I think we'll be on track to hit 38 to 40 again, just because this is where we hit last time with the census. Otherwise, move-ins and move-outs do happen over the summer. We pay very close attention. I think we've done a, a much better job in our communication, and that's not administration with you or you with us. It's us together communicating and collaborating about needs as we've worked over the last few years on ebbs and flows in enrollment. And that's to everyone's credit because I think it helps us get our programming right when we open the school year. At least for us so far. I, if we see us go lower, I'll be coming back to let you know that or inform the superintendent and the business manager accordingly for the upcoming budget process. If we look like we're gonna come in higher, I'll also let you know that too. And that is possible.
Don't let us know that. No, yeah, don't let us know.
That is possible. I can't tell you it isn't.
Can I just jump in? The enrollment numbers I, I have gotten so far. Last year, I had 71 kindergartners. I, I had 88 students. Right now, I'm at 76. So I was 71 last year, I'm 76 this year. So my numbers will be similar. I'll probably be in the low 90s.
90s.
I would guess.
Yeah.
Which, right, I currently have five sections of playing and five sections next year.
Yeah.
Any questions for?
Yeah, go ahead.
Windows replaced, is it certain windows or all the windows in Millville?
The, the windows have not been worked on since building opened.
So are we looking at replacing them and updating them completely? Or is, are there certain windows that need to be, is this-
I, I think it's, it's more putting it on the radar screen and opening the dialogue and the conversation at this point. Again, we're hypersensitive to the circumstances of both communities and the fact that they feed us as a region. In this instance, it's just about making sure we get it onto the list and create an awareness. We've really been fortunate in our use of our green grant. Millville was very generous in really insulating the building. And so doing, uh, they've created a lot of heat upstairs. So I keep wondering why people walk in in short-sleeved shirts most winter days, and it's because it, it's warm up there and it's well insulated. And that's a credit to the community for putting things forward the way they have. However, it's created a, an alternate problem in that the condition of the windows are wearing, and it, it's time to kind of look at that and put it on the punch list.
What is option A on the air conditioning?
Option, option A was if we were to run actual air conditioning into that space. And so we did spec out, you know, and run some quick price quoting. What would that be approximately? And that was one of the numbers we got that came in, in the middle. That's, uh, uh, option C, or I'm sorry, option B with the two AC window units. They'd be just like what you'd have in your home.
Yeah, but are they enough to cool the system that needs cooling?
Great question. Fingers crossed.
I'm looking at Sean.
I'm looking, we're all looking at Sean. Do two-window air conditioning cool the room as much of a, as an air conditioning system would do? I mean, do they work? Or are we gonna every year replace two air conditioning units?
There's two aspects to what you're talking about upstairs, at least in the computer lab. You're gonna need at least a window unit and the lab.
The lab, okay.
With the server room, how they factor it is how much wattage and heat is given off by the equipment in there.
Yeah.
That needs to be a dedicated portable unit. And the reason why we want it portable is so that we don't have to trouble any holes in the wall. You can vent it either out the window or vent it into the ceiling. A portable unit might be okay in that room, but it's, it's like a little arch that heats it and sits in the room. So I would think a window unit, maybe 10,000 BTUs or 15,000 BTUs would do it.
Would do enough. Okay.
Just be a question. Those windows aren't like your traditional window.
Right.
They don't slide up and down like we're used to.
No, they go this, they go this, yeah.
They're more a casement window, the ones like this. So I would think a contractor may have to pop the window up, put something in that has to be done.
We have them in the cafeteria at Millville right now.
Yeah.
That's what you're-
The cafeteria. And that was my understanding, you're talking of a dream that, that, um, a contractor committed to pop the window up and actually fabricating a housing for a state-owned facility. But yes, I, I think it could be done in the project.
Okay. So these aren't really A and B options, and it's, we need both?
Both. Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
It gets very hot. It's, even in October, the sun's shining right through there.
No, I think it's A and B on, on, on how to do it.
No, there's two different rooms that need to be done.
I think A sounds like the server room, $13,000.
No, A was central air and B is two window units.
Right, but there's two rooms that need to be done. One- One is a portable unit, one could be a window unit.
Where is the server room in Millville?
It's actually adjacent to that room, but you have to think, but the biodeal, it's a separate room. It's a very small room with the servers around.
Between the, the science room.
It's a decent sized room.
It's not the greenhouse, is it?
I have a vendor coming in on Monday. Those numbers are probably going to change.
Okay.
All right. A vendor for?
For the, yeah, for the purposes of this exercise this evening, we were just trying to get placeholders and some numbers.
Sure, no, that's great. We were looking at big picture.
We were looking at, this is great.
Yeah. We were, we were looking at big picture and we want, we want to make sure, because as you all are aware, our communities have said to us, you know, give us the real picture. What is, what are the needs? What is it, projections for three years? And, and, you know, we, if we just do our increases that we see forthcoming and we don't build these things in, then, then our planning doesn't work. And we're always behind in the eight ball. And, and we know this is a very big picture and it will get smaller, but we need to show what we really need and talk about it and be passionate about it.
So the, the last time we sat together, I believe we closed with, it's time to give the tools to the teachers because they haven't had tools. You've heard that message from Mr. Dudek. You've heard it from Mrs. Kurt Hoard. And so to that end about what we need, the teachers need some tools. And to be, to be matter of fact and just to the point, we have curriculum and instruction items on the docket that we haven't even talked about at the elementary level yet. And that, you know, I don't want to say it's any less important than a capital item or a building need, but it's, it's time for the faculty and staff to have the tools they need to do their job. And so we have been doing homework and research. Empowering Writers next year, I believe you'll see in the packet enclosed for K-1 training. We're doing two through five this year, which has gone well. Empowering Writers has been wonderful to us. They've been an excellent partner with Blackstone Millville Regional School District. And our two through five training thus far has been well received by the faculty. And so they'll be back in January to do more work. And then they're even willing to do a closeout webinar in March with us. And we did that for reasonable money, I mean, reasonable money. Right now, what you're looking at is a placeholder of about $8,000 for grades K and 1, which now means it rolls into John F. Kennedy, as well as Millville Elementary faculty in those grade levels. Secondly, for grades six through eight, I ran price points for Mrs. Kurt Hoard as well for Empowering Writers. Empowering Writers gave us a quote of approximately 7,000 for nine faculty. However, I'm trying to work with them to get their calendar and ours to line up in FY19 so that we can send our faculty members in the middle school years in ELA and special ed and reading, out to a host site or another district, partner up with them and get that training with our faculty at a reduced cost for us. So we'd pay probably about, I'll make up a number, $300 a person for the nine people to go. Instead of a seven or $8,000 bill, it can, it could come in around 3,000, round number. These are the kinds of negotiations we're in the process of with Empowering Writers. Renaissance, we are continuing that dialogue with Renaissance. We got a three-year lock contract. And the initial numbers were up over $67,000 for three years. And we've really worked hard to get it to about 57,000 over three years. The difficulty today, just today, we were having dialogue and Mr. Himmelberger was really gracious enough to say, why don't I give the vendor a call about our, our financial or fiscal year schedule versus the actual year schedule and help them kind of work with us a little more in terms of when we can pay a first-year installment, a second-year installment, and a third-year installment.
And Renaissance is the Stars program.
Is the Stars platform, correct. On sciences, I ran a price point with National Geographic Learning. Got a price quote and actually the vendor came out randomly to just meet. For grades K through five, we're looking at approximately $70,000. It's a six-year entire, it covers everything. It has everything in it, in its package for all grade levels, K through five. It would cover approximately 135 to 140 students round off, give or take, for those students. And it would also include, you know, materials and supplies that they can perform labs and duties with. We have another vendor, Pearson, that we're talking to as well. The price point is approximately 70 to 80,000. The proposal we want to work on coming into spring is to have a pilot this year, because the science standards are locked. I mean, we're now in Massachusetts, pretty clear on what the curriculum frameworks are going to call for. And while science wasn't necessarily my forte, I've learned more than I care to comment on, on the business side of science and how to secure curricula, programming that meets the needs of our children with, whether it be an ebook reader process, or a textbook, or visuals, leveled reader series for our really advanced reader, or mid-level reader, or entry-level reader. So, you know, again, the science program itself is diversified and allows the teachers to differentiate the instruction according to the needs of the children and have it be in line with what they're looking to study, in terms of life science, earth science, or any skill area that they want to work on. These are, these are the things we've been talking about. These are the two primary areas we've been going after. The last one is ELL. We're in a compliance review year. Our coordinated program review is coming up. The same company ironically, and the same vendor who showed up the other day is also representing National Geographic Learning, but they have another division that is ELL. And they're willing to let us pilot some of their materials this spring to see what we like. And the price point they just quoted me randomly quickly was approximately $10,000 for the children that we have who are second language learners. Now, again, that's, that's a round number that just came together. But it's a process that we have to go through and we have to tighten up with that vendor. But I really thought it was wonderful that they were willing to send us the materials and help us out, kind of help us get some things in the kids', kids' hands, as well as the doctors' hands. So we've got a lot of work that's going on right now in the area of curriculum instruction, especially in the elementary years, but up and down the district. I believe Mr. Dudek mentioned earlier, I have talked to him quite a bit about the sciences, just to see where he wants to go and what he wants to do. Really needs to involve him as well as for the middle school, Mrs. Kurt Hoard and others. And I really want those people to have things that meet the needs of our community's children and the regional school district's programs and services. But we have, we've worked hard to kind of line up for spring and get ready for FY19 and the budget process itself when it comes to curriculum and instruction.
Okay. Any questions, elementary or curriculum? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Nice to see you all.
Good seeing you.
Oh, we need some money.
Yeah.
Anybody got any? Well, that, so everyone understands our process, then we will, you know, continue to look at these numbers when, is working with each of the people that were here today and Alan to develop the FY19. As we begin to look at that FY19, we need to ask ourselves, are there things that need to refine in '20 or '21 so that we can have our chart of numbers, which we thought towns would better understand, to go along with Alan's report and the auditor's report? Because I think we have to keep bringing all of those pieces together. I think it's really important to, to put those together when we meet with the towns on January, with the community, our, our community and our towns. And we're inviting the Board of Selectmen and the finance committees and anybody else who has an interest in budgets to try to start understanding this process January 10. Okay. So we'll go back to where, where we are, but, uh, well, do you want, you want to keep going or you want to? Okay, you keep going. All right.
I just wanted to say thank you very much to the leadership team. Come on, Dave. Much appreciate the information, so thank you for your work.
And I'm sure we'll be chatting again.
The, just to recap, some of what you heard tonight from the leadership team touches on infrastructure, and that was also in the three-year plan. If you recall, last spring?
No.
If you recall, last spring, we filed for three accelerated repair projects, for Millville Elementary, for John F. Kennedy, and for A.F. Maloney. The only project that was accepted was Kennedy. Because it's an accelerated repair, it is only for the boilers and the windows. I did go to the Blackstone Board of Selectmen's meeting a couple weeks back, and not only do we have to redo that project that is reimbursed by MSBA, but we also have additional work that needs to be done at Kennedy that does not fall into the ARP project. Plumbing, bathrooms, electrical, flooring, there is a tremendous amount of work over and above that also the town needs to make sure that they plan for. We talked to MSBA today, Mrs. Cobb and myself, and we explained that the special town meeting will be January 24th, and at which time the town needs to approve the schematic funding of 75,000 if the project is to move forward. Once that is approved, then we get an owner's project manager and we move that project forward. And once it's approved at the June 27th board meeting officially, then we need the town to fully fund the entire project in order to get the reimbursement.
Is that a typical special town meeting, the 24th, 7 o'clock high school, or we don't know that?
That is a typical special town meeting. I believe it will be, it definitely will be at the high school. I believe it'll be at 7 o'clock.
7 o'clock, okay.
And that is imperative in order for this project to move forward. The reason why Maloney and Millville did not, were not accepted is because of the volume of projects before MSBA, they changed the original guidelines where boilers and windows needed to be 25 years old to 30 years old. So effectively knocking out Millville and Maloney. Part of the problem is that the MSBA is funded by the sales tax, one penny of the sales tax, and our sales tax revenue is mysteriously not growing in the Commonwealth, so they have more projects and less funding. But that's the plan for Kennedy to move forward. We will resubmit in the next window this spring, both Millville and Maloney, again for ARPs. We also just found out on Tuesday that the high school renovation project was not accepted for funding by MSBA. I spent a rather animated hour on the phone with them today and was assured that I communicated the, the condition properly and fairly and dotted all of the Ts. But again, too many projects with more needs and less funding. So we will very quickly, again, resubmit a statement of interest for the high school. And that renovation, which could be around 25 million, is necessary in order to maintain that as a 21st century teaching and learning environment. So that's what's in front of us, and there are a lot of timelines that we have to hit. There is a lot of communication that we need to do with MSBA, for we do need them as a partner in order to get these infrastructure items completed. They're long overdue, that's ancient history. Now we just have to move forward with, at, at the very least with Kennedy, so that we do impact that building as soon as possible. If, if we can arrange a town meeting June 28th to approve the entire funding, then that project begins this summer. But the lead time on windows means that the windows probably would not be installed until summer of '19, which is the completion date for that timeframe. So there's lots of, lots of calendar issues with these projects. It was a severe disappointment that the high school project was not accepted. And I think they know that now at MSBA. So that's an update on where we are with those projects. As Mrs. Reggio mentioned, June, January 10th, which is a Wednesday, is the community meeting to discuss our budget. And I think you've heard tonight, but also in previous meetings, the gap that exists between our budget and meeting the needs of our children. And when I look at the closest regional districts, which are King Philip and Mendenupton, Nipmunk, they operate on 33 and 36 million dollars. Yes, they have a few more students, but that's incremental costs. We operate on 22.4, and that's the difference. So I, I would hope that everybody who has an interest in our district and in our educational community is available on the, on the 10th of January, 6:00 PM at the high school auditorium. And then the next important meeting would be Wednesday, the 24th, for the special town meeting.
Alan, may I just have one, one question? The high school, you mentioned that you had, you, we can resubmit a new proposal for the next round. Is it tr, did I read it's, this resubmission is between January and March in the letter they sent?
The core renovations deadline is April 13th.
April 13th.
And the accelerated repair deadline, I believe, is February 15th.
But do they open in January?
They open January 5th.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
So I guess it's just, I know we have a list of, like, at the high school needs. Is there anything that we have to do that we can't wait for this MSBA grant?
That would be the ability of both towns to support capital projects.
Right.
And I, my history over the last several years tells me that there will not be funding for both towns to do, to do that work.
But what happens if these things do break in the meantime? Like, I mean, at some point, we're not going to have a choice, right?
Correct. The biggest one that kicks in is the, when you renovate a building, all of the handicap and accessibility codes kick in if your renovation is 30% of your assessed value of the building, which it would be.
It'd be a big problem up there.
So that's a tremendous amount of work to make the building, to bring it up to code. And you have to go before the Architectural Access Board, swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth. And then they will grant you variances and waivers on certain requirements, but they will force you to, to make bathrooms handicap accessible, to change door locks and hardware, so those are handicap accessible, to lower and raise and, and do what you need to do. They would not make you widen all of the doors to the current code, because that would be an exorbitant amount of money, but they, so that renovation would kick in and trigger those. But this is still, in the long view, a tremendous value, because to build a new building is three figures. To build a new high school, 82, 120 million. So if we can do this for '25, it would be long overdue and very necessary, and a good value for the towns.
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay. All right. So we'll go backwards now to school committee. We have first meeting our agenda, the current LICE protocol and lunch policies. We... We have a current policy and procedure in our current manual, but as you all know, we are revising our policies. And we have gone through the process with MASCE and their assistance in that process, and one of the big pieces of discussion we had in that process was whether something is a policy or whether something is a procedure. And in the case of our old LICE policy, it was recommended to us that this is really procedural. It is, you know, what does, what do you do if there's an instance of, of LICE in a school? And, and so the recommendation is to remove it from the policy. So when discussions started happening in the communities recently, I started looking back at what other districts had done, had other, you know, because I was going to recommend through that process that we remove it and certainly just make it a procedure, and to see if other districts had done the same. And the results that I found in my review is that other districts had done the same, that it really is a procedural process, it is something that is in the handbook, and the handbook is something that is received by every parent, and every year the students bring home the form that says, yes, I've read the handbook, and the parent signs off on that. So the information is out there, and our procedure is out there, and if different schools wanted to change the procedure, they would do that through their school council and put it into their handbook, which then, you know, comes to us for review every year. So when we look at our policies, there will not be a school district policy for LICE. Anybody have any comments about that, or questions or concerns?
This, this one that you had put in our packet that stated May 8th of 2014, this is, this is, was already in the handbooks, correct?
Which one are you reading, the LICE? Yes.
The LICE.
Yes.
Protocol.
Correct.
Protocol, not policy.
Yes, correct. Yep, it is.
And I know it's been years, but in 2014, when this was implemented, I remember receiving those from the school nurse.
I do, too.
I think my oldest were still in elementary school at the time, so, but it is currently in all of our.
Yes, it is.
School handbooks.
Yeah, it is. And it, and that is where it is in most places, in most districts, it's in the student and parent handbooks, and so that's where our recommendation will be that it stay. We also, last year revised the lunch policy and want to put that into our new manual. But in the lunch policy, there is a component of it that indicates that if somebody is past due, and they, there has been outreach to them, and they're aware of the situation that they're due, and they continue not to pay, that we will withhold their records, meaning their, their report cards, or graduation.
Diploma.
Diploma. Thank you. And that violates state law, so.
The diploma or the report card?
Both. So we have to relook at that policy, and I don't know if anybody has a suggestion, but what other, we, the, the, the policy has been working in terms of follow-up with people and payments, and I know Mrs. Sheridan is not here right now, but she, she was very concerned initially, and by the end of the year, she said, you know, this, this worked okay, but I, I think it worked okay with the threat of the, you won't get your child's report card. So I think we need teeth in the policy, but we need teeth that are legal.
MASCE, you have a recommendation? When you were sitting with me?
No, just can't do that.
Okay. Because that's against the law.
That's a good idea.
Is prohibiting.
What else they might.
Prohibiting them from participating in senior activities and graduation exercises?
Nope, that's fine, that's okay.
Yeah, it's fine.
We just can't hold the actual diploma.
So you think by that point, like, not allowed to participate in your class, that whole senior week, they'd be paying that bill?
Yeah, I don't think the seniors are.
From like fourth grade.
I don't think the seniors are the issue. I think the elementary school is the issue, and the, I, I don't, yeah, I don't think this.
But it could also accumulate, though, like, starting now.
Well.
You know, it could be a.
Hopefully by that point, we would go to collection or whatever.
Because it's another school year, zero balance.
Yeah, by the end of the school year.
Hopefully by the end of the school year.
But the, it seems to be the elementary schools, and, and the, and, and the staff is doing a really good job of checking whether or not the family is eligible for the free or reduced lunch. You know, the processes are working, we just need to make sure our policy doesn't violate a law, but has enough teeth to make people go, ooh, I don't want my, you know, child to, to do that. I mean, we can, we can do, you know, no after-school activity or no, but the schools don't run that, the PTOs do, so, I don't know. We don't have to decide today.
That's almost, that's almost the same as giving them a cheese sandwich, because it's the kid, like, Bill would say, would say, it's not their fault that the parents didn't pay the bill.
Yeah.
So taking the after-school funds from them is kind of, but I think we should ask MASCE and bring some a little more.
Yeah, nothing we have to do today.
This is really, wouldn't conflict with anything until June anyway, right? So we have a little time to, well, report cards and diplomas is what I'm referring to.
Well, report cards go out in a couple of weeks, right?
Middle school and up, parents have access to the portal anyway.
Next weekend, Millville.
I don't know if we've heard of any.
Just kidding, kidding.
Have we actually held a report card? Do we know?
I, I don't know.
I don't know if we actually have.
We did last year, I don't.
Yeah, I don't know. I'd be surprised, yeah.
我可以 guarantee it, but I don't.
You would have heard about it.
Yeah. She said, I remember when she was here, she said the principals were.
Somewhere.
Even if MASCE, I mean, they may just say that the three bullets that remain are what we would do.
Yeah.
Collection agency, go to court.
And we, this is really our, our, and there's a lot of procedure in there, too, in addition to an actual policy, but our policy is that we, we won't do the cheese sam, you know, that we won't deny anybody a lunch. And we really are on the cutting edge of something, because very few schools, and so some are, are looking at our policy and saying, you know, we need to do something like that, so, you know.
It was on the news.
What?
It was on the news.
Yes, so kudos to, to us, or to Bill, but we just need to make sure it's compliant. So we don't have to do that today, but it is something as we develop our policies. And so speaking of our policies, because we are doing the coordinated review, what did you call that? Coordinated program review, we do have to have our, our policies updated and posted. So I am proposing that we take the policies that were revised through the process with MASCE, because we know then that they, they meet state law, they meet state guidelines with some of the recommendations that you all have given, and we look to those at our next meeting by January 11th to have, to have at least put onto our website and posted so that people can review, open to the community if they have comments or concerns, if people have concerns about those, make any kind of initial updates, but at least get a policy manual that is current with state law and posted to the MASCE website, posted to ours, and then by the January 11th, and then by the following me, meeting after that, approve those policies and remove any old ones that these replace. And then I would propose we have a policy review committee, and I have volunteered Sarah, Tammy, and Tara to do that, to then go through and look at each one, you know, is there wording? Is there something? And then bring those to the committee and do those on a more timely basis. But we do need to get our policies updated, we do need to get them posted, we do need to get, to be current with state law as, before this review starts. So that's the timeline. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about that? And I will make, you know, any, before we post them, the January 11th, I will make the changes you all have sent currently. Some of you have sent them. So that's what we'll be reading. And then January 9th will be the Blackstone Board of Selectmen meeting, where we have asked for replacement, Georgette. Jarrett? Jarrett, thank you. Georgette Jarrett has resigned from the school committee. And so we have asked them to post in the town that we are looking for a replacement. That has to be posted for 14 days, and then January 9th, at their 7 o'clock or 7:30 Board of Selectmen meeting, the members of the Blackstone School, uh, School Committee from Blackstone will ask that you be at that meeting, so hopefully we'll have somebody who can replace that, since this is a very critical time in our school committee process between budgets and the search committee process, so.
And Jane, just to confirm, letters of interest or intent go to the chair of the Board of Selectmen?
Yes. Perfect. Okay. The next thing, and I thought it was on our.
It's not.
It's not on here, but we have to do it anyway.
Give you to the word, you either.
Is the superintendent search process. The position has been posted, so we are officially looking for a superintendent for the Blackstone Millville Regional School District, and we will start that process once the application deadline has been met in early January with a preliminary review of the applications by a preliminary screening committee. This committee is named by the school committee and is representative of our communities and our district, and the lights went out.
I was really wishing Ms. Kirk was still here.
Right?
We all just have to move.
Look, it's not working. Very happy. I don't know if it's even a sensor, I think it's a natural timer.
We can do this in the dark, I can see. But anyway, we, that committee will work through executive session and do a preliminary screening of the applicants, and then recommend to the school committee as a whole candidates that should move forward. So we asked the constituents to submit names, whatever process they used to select their representatives was up to them, but Mrs. Vanaco will be the facilitator of this search process, so she will be working with MASCE, and she will be coordinating with the candidates and with the screening committee, and essentially facilitating those executive session meetings. Yes, we did not, we, we are doing this process by ourselves, so we, MASCE will give us technical assistance, but we did not hire them to come in and run the search for us. So Mrs. Vanaco is our facilitator to do that. School committee members on the preliminary screening, I'll be able to say it by the end of this, I'm sure, but preliminary screening committee are Tammy Lemieux and Sarah Williams, both from Blackstone, and Karen Vernon, and myself, Jane Reggio from Millville. We asked for a representative from the leadership team, and that will be Mrs. Carol Brown. We asked for a, an official or an appointed or elected official from the town of Blackstone, and that will be Mr. Bill Walsh. We asked for a appointed or elected official from the town of Millville, and that will be Mr. Rich Cravelo. We asked for a representative from Unit A, and that Unit A submitted the name of Esther Cody. From Unit C, it, it will be Julianne Wolford. And then we also solicited letters of interest from parents through, from the town of Blackstone and the town of Millville. From the town of Millville, we received a letter of interest from Richard Stearman, and would anybody like to make a motion to accept?
I will make a motion that we accept Mr. Stearman as the town of Millville parent to the preliminary screening committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Well, Mr. Stearman will be joining us as the town of Millville parent, and from the town of Blackstone, we received letters from Ms. Lori, and I apologize to anybody who's listening if I say your names incorrectly, Mrs. Lori Tocalo, Mr. Alan Dolinsky, Mrs. Bethany Dunton, and just received an email from Mr. Mike Buckley. So.
Wasn't there a deadline here?
There was, a deadline for the 12th.
It's past the deadline. I will not consider.
Pardon?
I will not consider it, it's past the deadline.
It's past the deadline, okay. Fair enough. So then we're looking at three names, Mrs. Tocalo, Mr. Dolins, Dolinsky, and Mrs. Dunton. Does anybody have any comments, suggestions, recommendations?
The only thing I'd like to point out is that Mr. Dolinsky, we, we did ask for a current parent of, is that, or am I inaccurate?
Our letter said. Uh, open letter to parents of students within the Blackstone Millville Regional District. So I guess I would assume that that meant current students, but doesn't say. We're looking for a parent representative to serve on the screening committee. Oh, yes, it does say, we are seeking one parent from each member town with a child currently in the BMR School District to commit to time. We do say it in the text of word.
I'm just reading through the letters of interest.
I will say that Mrs. Dunton submitted both a letter and an email, so she did it both ways.
I'd like to move to nominate Mrs. Dunton.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion, or anybody like to do someone else? Hearing none. All those in favor of Mrs. Dunton?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will send letters out, and that will then be our preliminary search committee, once we move that, yep. So motion to accept the entire committee?
Second.
And Monique, I have all the names here. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so, yes, you can.
There is going to be a letter sent to each per, that, there is one stipulation, I don't know if I should call it a stipulation, but being in attendance at all of the scheduled meetings and interviews is important to participate. So we do have those dates and times listed. If there is a conflict for anyone that has been appointed, we would need to know in a very timely manner, so we can go back to an alternate, because the, the dates are, trying to stay with our timeline, the dates are time-sensitive, so we will be contacting.
And you'll be sending that to everybody. I, I will send letters to anybody who we did not select, but.
So I'll send out the letter, just notifying that they've been appointed, and those are the dates and times.
Yeah.
And. Do we know how we're going to handle that, if there's someone that cannot attend? We don't really, we don't have any alternates for Millville, clearly. We didn't ask the towns for alternates, so are we just going to go without that?
Person for that day.
Person for the, I mean, they can't, they can't be at one interview and not at another, or they can't not be there when.
I think we have to have that. I think we could have that discussion with that, with the group. I mean, if, if you're not there when you're reviewing the applicants, that's really the role of the committee is to review the applicants, so. Seems awkward, but.
Right.
But there may be, I mean, if we, you know, we are hoping in our process, and, and our letter says this, we are hoping to interview candidates, like, right after Martin Luther King, so that, like, 16th, 15th or 16th.
Well, we did, we put out that week, right.
Yeah. But, you know, there may be candidates who. But, you know, there may be candidates who, well, I can't come until the 24th, and they're a strong candidate, and we'd like to see them come, and that, you know, there may be somebody, there may, it is possible that in a committee of 11, not everybody can be at every single interview. It is possible. Would have to be possible.
But then how can they make a final vote?
Well, they.
You have to, when we went through it with NSAC, you had to, you have to be there. So you're either able to make the dates, which we did, when we sent out the letter, we said, this, you need to block off this week.
Yeah.
And I think we've included Saturday morning.
We did.
I, that's really not what I'm worried about as much as the other two dates that weren't.
Yeah, I would agree, yeah.
Everyone already knew of that week, so.
Yeah. So, we'll see. Okay. Any other questions about the search? Okay. Consent Agenda A, warrants, field trips, and the minutes of the November 9th. Is there a motion to consider that?
So moved.
Consent Agenda A by Jack. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Karen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Any other topics? Okay. Our next meeting, January 10th, well, January 9th, no, January.
So we have a, we will have it, January 4th.
January 4th.
January 4th at 4:30. You did ask me if that, we had agreed on that time. That's the first date on the preliminary screening committees.
But that's everybody?
That is everybody.
Yeah.
And then we will move into.
An executive session.
Executive set, well, it will be.
Just the screening committee.
Correct.
And then January 9th is another search committee, but also is the Blackstone.
It is not.
Meet.
The full committee.
Right.
But that's the night of the Selectmen's meeting.
Right. And then January 10th is the community meeting, and January 11th is our regular scheduled school committee meeting.
And then January 24th is the special town meeting for Blackstone.
And January 20, and if anybody.
In the scheme of things, as we're overviewing.
If anybody thinks we're not busy in January, and we, is January 24th our next meeting? Is our, no, 25th, and then the 25th is our meeting.
What, is the 20, the town meeting is on a Tuesday? Is that?
Must be. Wednesday.
24th.
Wednesday. Okay. Any, any school committee members have any reports that they need to say at 10:30 at night?
Did I ever officially tell everyone that we're going to not proceed with the regional agreement amendment at this time? I know, I think I said it maybe in a workshop.
Yeah.
I don't know if I said it publicly, so, publicly, if I didn't.
We're putting that on hold.
Yeah, just discussions.
Unlimited amount of time. Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Nobody?
So moved.
Second.
Your honor.
Tonight, Jeff.